Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Policy Committee meeting for the Halton Catholic District School Board for June 8, 2021. Please be advised that this is streaming on our YouTube channel and will be recorded and available for future viewing. Seeing as it is National Indigenous History Month, we would like to start off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Our steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty learned.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. And this evening, we will start off with our opening prayer, and we have trustee Murphy on prayer. And I would ask that everybody keep in their prayers, the family in London that lost their lives, that we have a special moment for them. Trustee Murphy?
Please join me in a sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. Loving Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we gather together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with the spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us to work together, and encourage each other to excel. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther to be the best we can be. We ask this in the name of Lord Jesus Christ, amen. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Moving on to item number two, approval approvals. Item 2.1, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I have a point of order, trustee Guzzo.
I'm looking for, I'm looking for a mover first before. Thank you, trustee Agnew, moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by. Trustee, thank you. Trustee Carabella, what is your point of order?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On this particular agenda, items 4.4 and 4.3, the report and accompanying documents for these items were not received by the time the agenda was issued on Friday. So they didn't comply with our bylaws 9.2 and 9.4, which states that the final agenda and supporting documentation will be provided to each trustee and student trustee on the Friday preceding the date of the meeting.
Okay, so thank you, trustee Carabella. So item 4.3 was included, that's Catholic School Councils and Catholic Parent Involvement Committee, all of that information was provided. So that is in order. Item 4.4 and 4.5, the information was received as per the bylaws on Friday. It, however, unfortunately did not get posted, but it was posted Monday morning. And seeing that this is a policy meeting and there's nothing binding, it's just recommendations, it's here for discussion, so it will stay on the agenda.
Can I speak to that? Because it isn't a discussion, it's a action item.
I understand, and I've made my decision. It is an action item, it's a recommendation, though, it's not final and binding until it goes to the board. So it was received, trustee Carabella, I would be happy to show the timestamp, and I believe Superintendent Bakich also confirmed that it came in, it was timely. So unfortunately, it didn't get posted with the package, but it is here, so thank you, but it's overruled.
I know, but I can still explain something for clarification, because it's supposed to come to the trustees, it's not just supposed to be received by the board, it's part of the agenda package to be received by trustees. And all that needs to be done to verify, to follow the rules, is to just propose these two items as action items at tonight's meeting, and you need unanimous approval, and then go ahead.
So that being said, it's on the agenda, I'm not changing the agenda. Technically, our bylaws, the items that you are referencing, reference board meetings, not policy meetings. If we were going to say that all of these items on the bylaws reference policy meetings, then our agenda would look very differently as well. So that being said, it was received as per, as per this information, so we will be moving forward.
So I could appeal your decision.
You can appeal my decision.
Okay, I do, because in our Rules and Regulations, Section 1.2, it says that "The rules and regulations contained in this bylaw shall be observed in all proceedings by the board and shall be the rules and regulations for the order and dispatch of business of the board and its committees." So except where statute or legislative regulations otherwise provides.
And again, actually, there, it's contradictory, because then if you go into where it talks about committees, it talks about that there are terms of reference that are used. And technically, in our bylaws, it also states that a draft agenda is supposed to be shared on seven days in advance. We don't do that as well for policy. We've had this discussion before here at Policy, actually, I raised it in that we don't follow the actual bylaws, so we're going to go based on practice, and I'm, like I said, that's, we can't pick and choose what we follow and what we don't follow. So we don't actually follow this agenda, we don't follow any of these procedures. Trustee DeRosa, you have, or sorry, trustee O'Brien, you have your hand up?
So are we voting on an appeal now?
I'm assuming trustee, trustee Carabella, you're appealing my decision?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So just to be clear, she's appealing the decision on policy item 4.4, I-26, student trustees on the Halton Catholic District School Board, and 4.5, opening and closing exercises. So we're voting on whether or not they should, you're appealing my decision. So we'll start with trustee Agnew.
I am opposed to the appeal.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor of the appeal, Madam Chair.
Trustee Duarte?
I'd say I'm opposed to the appeal.
Trustee Tomasi?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Schernotta?
Opposed.
Trustee Gubert?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
I am also in favor. The items will stay on the agenda. Moving on now, are there any other questions in regards to the agenda?
Madam Chair, you said you're in favor, you should have said you're.
I'm sorry, I proposed, sorry, I proposed, is what I meant. Thank you, trustee Duarte, for clarifying. I'm opposed as well, so the items will stay on the agenda. Is there any other questions on the agenda?
Madam Chair, my hands up.
Okay, trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through Madam Chair. In regards to item 4.4, policy I-26, student trustees on the Halton Catholic District School Board. I do recall we did bring this forward a year ago. And I'm just wondering why it's on the agenda again. I thought the cycle was three years.
Thank you for that question, trustee O'Brien, but as you are aware, any trustee can bring forward an item to be reviewed at any time at policy. Same with bylaws, any trustee can bring that forward. So that's what has happened here, is somebody has brought forward a change to the, to the policy.
A follow-up, if you don't mind, Mrs. Chair, Madam Chair. In regards to that, as I recall, I really thought that policy was debated quite fulsomely. So did this trustee not feel that we had dealt with it sufficiently a year ago?
So it was a different item that was brought a year ago, trustee O'Brien, this is a different change that has been proposed.
Oh, really?
Yep.
I recall it, but it's the same change.
No, the change last year was that, that the student trustees were voted on by the general student population, as opposed to just the Senate. This change is that we allow for a non-Catholic to be able to run for student trustee. This is the first time that it's come.
Oh, my, when I'm looking, excuse me, Madam Chair, but when I'm looking through the package, to me, this is about getting a reference letter from a parish priest, and I do recall we debated that last year.
That's part and parcel, because when you ask for a non-Catholic, for a non-Catholic to sit on as a student trustee, they wouldn't necessarily be able to receive a letter from, from a parish member, so that's what that's about. Because it coincides with the changes that have been proposed. That's not the only change that's been proposed here.
Correct, but I do recall us debating that last year.
Again, again, trustee O'Brien, I'm not going to change my answer, yes, sorry, trustee Agnew, your point of order, please?
Thank you, I just prefer if we're going to have any conversation or debate about this policy, we do so when we get to that policy.
Agreed, thank you. Trustee O'Brien, I'm going to move on to the next person. Trustee DeRosa, you have a question?
I concede my, my spot, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Tomasi, you have a question about the agenda, other than what we've already dealt with?
Since the matter, through you, Madam Chair, since the matter pertains to the approval of the agenda, I disagree with trustee Agnew, this matter is relevant. I disagree with Trustee Agnew, this matter is relevant and should be dealt with at the beginning of the approval of the agenda. Notwithstanding that, that particular item should not be appearing unless we take a vote and it's by unanimous consent, because as.
Trustee Antomasi, I've already ruled on this, so we're moving on.
I'm asking you.
And it's been appealed, so it's done.
But I'm appealing, I'm asking, I'm appealing it on a different basis, and that is, since the information was not presented, and given that we're approving the agenda, I would ask that if this matter remain on the agenda, then a separate vote be taken pertaining only to the agenda.
Overruled. I'm not, I'm not taking that as an. You appeal my overruling, okay, so I'm not quite sure exactly what we're voting on at this point, Trustee Antomasi, but I'm gonna say that you're appealing once again, something that's already been decided. So, I'm not sure, unless, unless somebody, unless you're on the prevailing side, you don't get to be reconsidered.
I, I'm appealing on a different point of order, Madam Chair.
What is your point of order? State what has been violated.
My point of order is that since the information was not received by trustees, they're unable to form.
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Sorry, I have to deal with this one.
I'm, you're dealing with my point of order.
This was already dealt with, Trustee Antomasi, in Trustee Carabella's appeal. Specifically about the information not being given to trustees, so it's not a different point of order, and it's not a different appeal, so we're moving on. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam. Sure, I just wanted to add some context. I believe that this was put on the agenda out of an action item, a response to delegation from a, from a board meeting, which all of the trustees were in attendance at.
Yes, you are correct, it was, we, we did discuss, have discussions at the board in regards to that, thank you, Trustee Murphy. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, so that's the reason, that's the reason why it's on the agenda, and everybody is aware that it should be on the agenda, because we were all at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Seeing there are no other questions, we're going to move on to a vote. So I'm gonna do a recorded vote, seeing as there seems to be some questions about the agenda. So, Trustee DeRosa, though.
Madam Chair, this is the approval of the agenda, right?
This is the approval of the agenda.
I'm in favor, Madam Chair.
Okay, Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Opposed, Madam Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed, Madam Chair.
Trustee O'Hearn-Sernota?
In favor.
Trustee Gubert?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
I am also in favor, the agenda passes.
I'm also in favor, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, Trustee Agnew, I'm starting the rotation, so I, I forgot to go back up top. Moving on to item 2.2, Approval of the Minutes from May 11th, 2021. Can I have somebody move, please? Carabella? Trustee Carabella, thank you, seconded by. Trustee O'Brien. I'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Against, Madam Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Sernota?
In favor.
Trustee Gubert?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte? Oh, sorry, Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
So the minutes pass. Moving on to item 3, Declarations of Conflict of Interest. Can I ask that everybody mute their microphone if they don't have, please, because we're getting rustling of papers, thank you. Moving on to item 4, Action Items, Policy I-06, Delegation to the Board. Can I have somebody move? This motion, it is, Trustee, Trustee O'Brien, thank you, seconded by.
Trustee Agnew?
Trustee Agnew, thank you. And Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair, I won't make this too complicated, the changes are there, the suggested changes are there for my fellow trustees' review and discussion. We have had, we've always had delegations to the board, but we seem to have had an uptick in the number of delegations that we have seen come forward over the last little while, depending on the, the particular topic that we have before us. And I think to the best of our intentions, that the process can sometimes be a little bit complicated for our stakeholders and rate pairs who are wishing to delegate. And so in an effort to try to make things a little bit clearer, a little bit more transparent, some of the suggestions have been listed here. I went through some reviews of other boards and their delegation policies, and have spoken to other trustees and other boards. And again, have just provided the changes that I'd like to see come to this policy, and happy to take any questions or have any conversation around that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. So if we can just scroll to the portions of the, the policy, that'd be great. Trustees, I'll open it up for any questions. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, I have several items, but I'll go into the queue after. Regarding the first point under Requirements, I thought there should be a time put there that, that it, that an individual group wishing to delegate to the board shall submit the request in writing to the Office of the Director of Education no later than seven days prior to the meeting of the board, to be received by 11:59 PM. So I thought that would be important, that we put a timeframe, and it could be the end of the day as people are working, and it gives them an extra moment to put in their request for delegation.
Okay. Is there any comments on adding in a timeframe? I'm, I'm wondering if Trustee Carabella, it just says by the end of the day, is supposed to business day, and we can allow for the intent? I'm just wondering if it sounds, it would sound better. No later than seven days prior to the meeting of the board, by the end of the day. By not stipulating business day, then it means the end of the day.
Means like 11:59 PM?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any conversation or any disagreement? Do we have consensus on that? It's, oh, how about this, is anybody opposed to making that addition? Okay, so we'll add that in. Trustee Carabella, is that point okay? Oh, Director Daley? Director Daley, you have your hand up?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Just so we're clear, there's no expectation that there's gonna be staff that's receiving, receiving delegations at 11 o'clock at night.
That's correct, I think it just.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it goes to the timestamp, Director Daley, I think really is, and, and at this point, it's not the actual delegation that's due, this is just the request to delegate.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can add that in under the first point. By end of day. Okay, and you had something else, Trustee Carabella?
Well, I did, if we're just gonna go down the paper, I've, then I would, I didn't understand, we never use the word deputa- it's the fourth bullet down. The regional trustees will be notified if a delegate registers to make a deputation on a subject matter that is region-specific. First of all, we don't really use that word, deputation, I think it adds confusion that we stick to the word delegation. And I'm also questioning whether that is really required, that bullet, I don't understand the need for that.
Would you like me to speak to that, Trustee Guzzo? Yes, actually, Trustee Agnew, that'd be great.
Great, okay, and thank you for the question, Trustee Carabella. I think the idea behind that is that there's, there are often times where, not often, but there are times where delegates will make a request to delegate, or they'll register to delegate, and the trustees from that area are not aware that they've made that request to delegate. And so I think just in the manner of the trustees being aware that there is a stakeholder or rate pair in their area who has registered to make a delegation, would be, I think it's just a, a matter of information for those trustees. So that they're aware that, again, someone in their area, or someone in their district, if you will, has made a request or registered to delegate. Because we often don't find that out until later on, and we often don't know where the delegations are from.
Thank you. Does that answer your question on that, Trustee Carabella?
It does, I wonder if others have thoughts on it. We do receive that maybe when we have the delegation written up in the agenda, that it says what municipality they're from. I don't know if we have to know exactly about this.
I think it's not just simply for that, I think it's also, I thought, I thought I heard Trustee Agnew say that even those that are, are declined. So, we wouldn't necessarily be given that information if it's declined. Yep, Trustee Duarte, do you have a comment on this?
Yeah, so, so I, I'm not in the queue right now, so I need to go in the queue and comment on the same point.
If it's on the same point, I think, like, you have an issue with it, Trustee Duarte, since we're talking about it?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Madam Chair, if somebody from, say, from Georgetown, for example, wants to put a delegation, and the, it's received at 11:59 at night, how, how does the person receiving the delegation know where this person is from? So I'm just wondering why this requirement, and I, I, I'm not sure that.
I think it's a different part, Trustee.
The regional trustee will be notified if a delegate, delegate registers to make a deposition on a subject matter in a region.
That is region-specific, right? If they don't know, then they wouldn't be shared. I, I think if it's, if it's region-specific, you're right, if it's, if they don't know where it's from. But the delegations, there's a title given to it, so if it says new build in Georgetown, then obviously that would be region-specific. If it's something that encompasses the whole board, then that's not region-specific, that's board-specific, board-wide specific. So I think, I think that distinction would be, could be made with the title of it. Did you have another issue with that?
No, I was just wondering about that, how it's gonna work.
Can I comment on that, Trustee Guzzo?
Sure.
Some more, some more information would be better.
Yeah, sure, and thank you, Trustee Duarte. You know, again, you know, I don't wanna stick on points. If, if there are certain points in the, in the changes to this, this policy that trustees just don't understand, don't, don't feel comfortable with, or you know, maybe have an issue with, that's okay. This is a, again, when I said earlier that I did refer to a number of other delegation policies, this was something that had come up in a few different policies, and I, and I like the idea of it. So basically, it's just if the information is available to us, if somebody from Burlington registers to give a delegation, doesn't have to be at 11:59 at night, it can be the next day when the delegation has been received, and has, the request has been made, that that, that those trustees are made aware that someone in your area has requested to delegate, or because there are times too, so there are also times that people have requested to delegate, and for whatever reason, it may, the email may have gotten missed, the request to delegate may have gotten missed. So I, I think it's just a matter of notifying those regional trustees that someone in your area has requested to delegate or is registered to make a delegation, and then you're just, you just know that there's someone in your region that is looking to speak up on, on a specific matter. Again, I'm not hung up on it, it's something that I saw that I liked, and I spoke to a few trustees who really, they do it by ward, but they really like that, having that in there, I'm not stuck to it, so just a comment.
Thank you. Trustee O'Hearn-Sernota, you have, you have a comment in regards to this bullet?
I do, thank you, and through you, Madam Chair, and to Trustee Agnew, I just, that bullet point, I think should either be removed, because to me, my philosophy is when they're delegating, they're not delegating to the region, they're delegating to the board as a whole. So for me to find out someone from Georgetown is delegating, is kind of moot when they get to the table. However, the other half of it, that maybe when a delegation is declined, that the regional trustees are aware, so that if we get an email that someone's upset, we kind of already know that's happening. So I'm kind of asking for 50% of that to be removed, and 50% of that to remain.
Trustee Agnew, would you be okay if it says that, and, and I'm wondering if I should say the municipal trustee will be notified if a delegate registers to make a deputation on a subject matter that is municipal-specific and has been declined? Trustee, is that what you were thinking?
Well, we, sorry, Trustee O'Hearn-Sernota, I didn't want to cut you off, I was just gonna comment on that.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so we do have a point in the next one that does talk about if there is a denied delegation request, that it be shared with all trustees. So, you know, I mean, again, I do think, when we get to that comment, I do think it's important that trustees are aware that there has been a declined delegation, because many are probably not aware that there is an appeal process for that. But if we, if we believe that the denied delegation should be communicated specifically to the trustees from that region, as opposed to all trustees, I, you know, that wording is fine, or we could get completely rid of that regional trustee piece that I've put in there, if nobody thinks it's, it's relevant, that's okay, I don't take it personally. We could remove that, and then, like I said, when we get to the next section, we, I do ask that the Chair of the Board, in this point, share the denied delegation request with all trustees.
So.
I would go with that, if there's already a point moving forward that I forgot about, if we could remove point four, in my opinion, I would appreciate that.
Okay, so is there, is there any other concerns? Maybe we'll take this to, like, have a consensus vote on it. Is there any other concerns with this bullet? So we've heard from Trustee Duarte, Trustee Carabella, and Trustee O'Hearn-Sernota. Is there anybody else?
I'd like it removed, Madam Chair.
Okay, anybody else?
I, I kind of like it, to tell you the truth. If something come up in my region, I, we have so much to do with all the time. And I prioritize all the time, if there's something about assumption in high school, I want to be right on it. I, I gotta be honest, I kind of like it, but that's.
Okay. Trustee DeRosa? I'm feeling we're kind of split on this.
No, I have no comment on this particular point, I was waiting for my turn to highlight some other issues, so.
Okay, so let's.
Very patiently.
Perfect, so you're okay with this point, then?
I'm indifferent, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Murphy?
Yeah, I, I am ambivalent on it. I, I think if some people feel it's important, then that, that's fine. I think it should specify who is notifying them, just as, as below, where it says the Chair shall share the denied delegations, I think it, it should come from the Secretary of the Board, because that's the reality, that's where it's gonna be communicated through hit, through the Secretary's office, not the Chair.
Okay.
So I think you just make those distinctions.
Okay. Trustee Antomasi? I, in regards to just this bullet, we're trying to see if we're gonna, we can move on, and then I'll go into the next people in line. You have no concerns with it?
I have no comment.
Okay, thank you. Did I catch everybody? Student trustees? Trustee Agnew, so it looks like there's consensus to keep it in.
I'm just gonna make one suggestion, Madam Chair, and that's perhaps we change the word regional to municipal, because again, just wasn't thinking this, I wasn't thinking about it because we are not by ward, but we do represent municipalities within the region, so we all do represent Halton, but we do represent different municipalities within. So perhaps for those trustees who are in favor of this point, to change it to municipal trustees. And further to Trustee Murphy's point, to put in something about who would notify, thank you.
By the Secretary of the Board. Trustee Duarte?
And the word deputation, I like the word delegation there, is that, could it change, or what?
I, I think.
Yeah, we can change them.
Yeah, that's okay, thanks. I, I think they mean the same, I know they mean. Okay, all right, okay, so moving on, so I've got next in line here, Trustee Carabella, I'm gonna put you back in the queue if that's okay. Trustee O'Brien? Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through madam chair. I see some good changes in this policy, especially regarding how well we deal with the time element with delegations. Upon reflecting about use of board time, I know there's an item later on coming up about how long our meetings are and the fact that we have to have special meetings. This policy does speak well to getting through our delegations and the period afterwards quicker. I mean, we have had sometimes spent hours on delegations. Especially the last couple of months. The five minute rule, excellent idea. I like that. If you can't say in five minutes, I don't think you can say it. And a lot of the delegations have been that short anyway. I wanted to draw attention to the one time element about says trustees will ask two questions for clarification purposes. And then it says trustees will have three minutes in total to ask their clarification questions. Okay, another great attempt to scale down those long periods after each delegation that's, wow. That can go on, sometimes even past an hour, an hour and a half. I actually would like to take it a step further. And I'm looking back at all the question periods we've had. They're supposed to be for clarification only. And I have to be honest with my fellow trustees, I felt that that rule has been more abused than used. I would say the majority of the questions have not been for clarification. And I'm guilty of this too, because I find that once the debate starts, I want to get into the debate. The questions become debates. Of course, of debate. And I find a lot of points of order are raised at that time. So again, I think this is a good attempt to scale that down, but I'd be honest with you, I'd like to take it a step further. And and I would like to get rid of the question period altogether. And just hear me out trustees, I know that sounds a little radical. But if you think about it, all the delegations are given to us at least four or five days ahead, some more. They're well written. We have lots of time to look at them. And I really haven't seen any that have been that unclear. I mean, what's often unclear is is the person's stance or their position. And I'll be honest with you, might make a concern with our board right now is how long our meetings are going. And I honestly will ask you to really think, will we be any less effective if we got rid of that question period? I just put that out and.
So are you proposing that as a change then trustee O'Brien? I like to get the consensus of the group?
I would like to have those two lines struck out completely, that there be no question period.
Two questions and then the trustees will have three minutes. So those two parts there, okay?
There's no questions at all. We just hear the delegation, next delegation, next delegation. And then everything else will be at the response. That's what I'm proposing to my trustees. I just put it out there. Thank you.
Is anybody, how about we start this way? Anybody opposed to that proposal?
Yes.
Madam chair.
Yes. Okay, hold on. So I've got trustee Carabella is opposed. Who else did I hear?
Trustee DeRosa.
Trustee DeRosa?
Trustee Agnew.
Trustee Agnew, okay.
Trustee Ian Tomasi.
Okay. Anybody else? I am also opposed to that. I think I understand where you're coming from trustee O'Brien. And I, and I think it's a good place, but I think the three minute limit will condense it completely. But sometimes I think there needs to be a clarifying question. Do you have any other suggestions trustee O'Brien?
No, madam chair. I've said my piece. And I'll go back to the queue if I have any more questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
On that topic?
Yes, trustee Duert.
So why did we increase ten? Why don't we just leave it at five and reduce the time to five, five minutes and that's it?
Because it's still keeping the same amount and it's allowing for more delegations. Should there be, as opposed to limiting it to five? Because what happens is the discretion of the board too, is my understanding, discretion of the chair. So this way it allows for more people to delegate, especially on contentious issues. But trustee Duert, I'm going to, that's a bit of a different topic right now and there's other people in the queue. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you in the queue for that, but we've got trustee DeRosa next, okay?
Thank you, madam chair. This is what I put myself in line for, to discuss this item in particular. So just to preface, I'm all about giving as many people as possible the opportunity to speak. That's to say our constituents. So, and I also believe that the five minutes is not enough for them to go through their delegation and their very eloquent delegation. So I, I'm not comfortable with moving ten minutes to five minutes, but I am comfortable and I agree with my colleague trustee O'Brien, that where we lose a lot of time is in, is in, is in after the delegation, after the delegate has set his peace. And I would be, I would recommend moving the clarification question to one and somehow leaving it at that. But not reducing, not reducing the time available to the delegate from ten minutes to five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, so trustee DeRosa, that's your suggestion. Is there any anybody who would like to see that, so you want to keep it at ten, but leave it at ten minutes? Is that my understanding trustee DeRosa?
I'm happy to reduce the follow-up question to one question per trustee.
Okay, so ten, so but ten delegations at ten minutes? Okay, thank you. And reduced to one question, okay? So let's start with the first piece. The ten delegations for ten delegations at ten minutes. Trustee O'Brien, you have a comment on this?
Thank you through me and madam chair. I will say what I just said five minutes ago. If you can't say in five minutes, you can't say it. So I leave it at that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So you're, you wouldn't be in favor for increasing it back to ten minutes? Okay, thank you. Trustee Murphy?
Where do I start? So ten delegations at ten minutes, then we're going to have to move our board meetings to four to five hours minimum because it's not only the delegation and the clarifying questions, it's then each one of those potentially during an action item can now move a motion. So the practicality of trying to be the traffic cop during this, which I have the luxury of doing right now, just getting people to ask questions instead of their debate is near impossible. So if we make this move, there's no way we'll get through any action items on our agenda whatsoever.
Thank you trustee Murphy. Trustee Agnew, you have your hand up?
Thank you and through you, madam chair. Just a comment, I agree with trustee Murphy. I think the idea behind this was to, as you stated, to allow for more delegations to be submitted and heard at the board table without compromising the amount of time that are spent on the delegations. And I will let trustees know the number of the boards' policies that I reviewed. Three minutes actually is a favorite, or five minutes. So that's where that idea came from. And so I would agree with trustee O'Brien. As much as there is for people to say, I think there's a concise way to say it. We allow two specific clarifying questions. It allows us to keep that time down, but still have questions of the delegation. And by having the ten delegations, it does allow us to have more people, more stakeholders use their voices on matters that are important to them. So I felt that increasing the number of delegations therefore, and then reducing the number of time allocated per delegation would just let us serve our ratepayers more concisely. So that was the idea. And like I said, ten minutes was very excessive in any of the policies that I reviewed.
Thank you trustee Agnew. So we've heard from three people so far that do not agree with the with the proposed changes of increasing it back to ten at ten minutes. We're leaving it at ten with ten minutes. Anyone else? I'm going to ask trustee Duert.
Madam chair, I believe I was lined up after trustee Murphy, if I'm not mistaken.
Sorry trustee DeRosa, we're still dealing with your proposal that you put forward. So we have to deal with that first and then.
Put me, put me wherever you want to put me, but I need to make a comment as a result of trustee Murphy's observation.
No worries. So trustee Duert, how do you feel?
So ten delegations on this particular point, I'm sticky with the number ten, but we'll come back to it later. So ten delegations at five minutes is good for me.
Thank you trustee Duert. Trustee O'Herns or Notta?
Hi, sorry. I'm trying to find the happy medium because we want to hear the voice, right? We don't want to stifle anyone's voice from delegating. I agree they can be concise and any follow-up material can be in the packet. So we can read it and understand it ourselves. So I would go with ten. And anywhere between three and five minutes, I'm happy with.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Carabella?
Yeah, it sounds, well, I mean, I've had years with ten minutes. I'm, I am used to it. I do see that we have a lot of debate now, which really we can keep it to clarification purposes. I don't want to take that away, the opportunity to ask for clarification. And you know, when other big topics came up in the past, we made exceptions and heard many delegations. And so somehow it worked in the past. I find like limiting voice, I find that very don't want to do it. So I like the ten minutes. I guess I could go to five, maybe six.
So the question is though, is, is ten at ten minutes as opposed to ten at five minutes? So.
Well, to that though, not every delegation is ten minutes. So some are, but some aren't.
So you're okay with this change then, just not the reducing the questions?
I'm okay with the change and not reducing
Okay, trustee Ian Tomasi?
I'm against the reducing the ten minutes. I'm also against increasing to ten. I think we should stay exactly as we are. And I think that when it happens, which is not that frequent actually, when we have matters that are substantive in nature, then we open it up and make exceptions by including more delegations.
Thank you.
Trustee Guzzo, may I just reconsider? And I agree with that. So I'll change mine to keeping it at ten minutes.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I had you down for.
Okay.
That's what I understood you said, was that you liked the ten minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Madam, madam chair, do I get to make my comments that you said I was allowed to make?
Well, I think you've already made your comments. It was a matter of whether or not people, if you have another thing, we can deal with that, but the consensus on this, I am also not in favor of increasing it back to ten minutes. So.
This is the point I wanted to make now. And I, I did put myself in the queue. So if you'll allow a closing comment on this.
It's not really a motion though trustee DeRosa.
No, no, not closing comment is the wrong word. I want to make an observation with respect to trying to make the meetings more efficient at the expense of people's voices. This is about giving people the time and the opportunity to express their views on certain things. If we are using this particular topic as a means of trying to make the meetings more efficient, I would suggest that this is not the way to go about it. I would suggest that managing the agenda is the way to make sure that the meetings get completed. Not by stifling the opportunity for our constituents to come and speak to us. Thank you, madam chair.
Thank you trustee DeRosa. Trustee Agnew, I see you have your hand up. I'm assuming it's in regards to this?
It is. Thank you through you, madam chair. So I actually respectfully would disagree with trustee DeRosa. I believe by increasing the number of delegations that we are receiving at our board table is actually increasing the opportunity for voice rather than decreasing the opportunity for voice. Yes, we are putting more of a time limit on that, but we are increasing the opportunity for more stakeholders to delegate on specific matters at our table. I would also comment that while trustee Ian Tomasi mentioned that it doesn't happen that often, it still does happen where we have certain topics that have numerous requests for delegation. And yes, we can make exceptions, but I will also remind trustees that that is to the discretion of the chair in conjunction with the secretary of the board. And so depending on, you know, who may be in that position and how they're, how they're viewing this, you may not see the flexibility or the the willingness, if you will, to allow more than the five delegations. So by having this in our policy, I think having ten is increasing stakeholder opportunity. We're keeping it to a manageable number so that our meetings can be better managed from a time perspective. And we still are allowing that piece there that says additional delegations may be added as deemed appropriate. So I think we're hitting all the points and that was my hope with this particular change.
Okay, thank you trustee Agnew. There's no consensus to make the change on that anyway. So I'm going to move on to the next person that was in line, which is trustee Duert. You have the floor.
Madam chair, can we go back to the bullet number under requirements? One, two, three, four, five, six, six on delegates may be heard at public committees of the board on an item on the agenda or concerning matters within the committees terms of reference. So what this tells me is that on any committee of the board, it could be a policy committee. It could be STEM or it could be bullying prevention committee. We can have delegations on that. So I'm just wondering why we need this bullet and I would, I don't agree with that comment, that bullet. So it's up to everybody to decide.
Okay, thank you trustee Duert. Trustee Agnew, do you want to just give us a, I took it as committees of the board, so it would only be those specific that are board committees, not ad hoc committees per se.
Yeah, correct. That's what I was looking at and perhaps the wording needs to be a little bit tighter. But so if I, if I use an example, and forgive me if this is not the right example, but if I use an example of a matter, ideally when a policy comes to the board table, you know, we hopefully have vetted that out at policy, we get to the board table and hopefully we're in consensus because the policy has been moved to the board table for us to vote on that. So if you look at things like that where there could be a policy that is affecting stakeholders or a policy that is affecting ratepayers, that they would have the opportunity to come and elect to, to come and delegate to the policy committee who, as an example, who may be reviewing a specific policy, who may want to have input on that policy. Sorry trustee DeRosa, can you mute? Because I can just hear some background. So that's sort of the idea behind that is that stakeholders would be able to have that conversation, or sorry, not have the conversation, but be able to delegate on a matter that's important to them, let's say at the policy meeting, and that will help shape perhaps some of the conversation that we have around the table prior to that coming to the board of trustees. So that's the idea behind that.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have a comment on this piece?
Sorry, thank you through you, madam chair. Looking back, I wanted to comment on what trustee DeRosa said, but you've gone forward, so I'll leave it, okay?
Okay, thank you trustee O'Brien. Sorry about that. Trustee Carabella, you have a comment on this issue?
Yes, thank you madam chair. So there was a moment when we were speaking about sending correspondence to committees of the board and that that's not allowed, or we even talked about, you know, sending. and that that's not allowed, or we even talked about, you know, sending correspondence to the policy committee. And this is where somebody, and it wasn't, it was said that it would take up too much time. But I feel that that is actually a more efficient way for somebody to voice their opinion on a policy is to be able to receive correspondence at the policy meeting or the CAC meeting or CPIC and not have a delegation actually. A delegation, I think, should come to the board table if it's an issue that is for all of us, then not just the trustees that are on that committee of the board, but it would probably be of interest to all the trustees should come to the board. So I don't agree with this bullet. I don't think we should be delegating to the committees of the board. But I.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. So we've heard from trustee Duert on this and trustee Carabella. Is there anybody else who's opposed to this piece? Trustee Antomasi, have your hand up?
No, I'm not opposed. I just wanted to add that all public meetings are allowed to have delegates. You can change and affect policies at the committee level as you can before the board. The process from a governance perspective is that committees shall receive delegations. It does not prevent, the Education Act nowhere prevents us from receiving input at the committee level.
Thank you, trustee Antomasi. Director Daley, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you. More of a question than a comment. So if I delegated to policy, would I then also be able to delegate to the board? Or would one kind of count for the, for the other? So if there was a policy at committee that was being discussed or debated amongst trustees and I put forward my position, do I then get to also delegate to the board?
May I address that, Mr. Madam Chair?
No, trustee Antomasi. Trustee Agnew, what was your intention on that?
Thank you. And through you, madam chair. That's actually a great question, Director Daley. I don't have an answer for you. I, you know, I was really simply looking at the ability for our stakeholders or ratepayers to be able to delegate at different committees. I mean, even CAC might be an example. If there's something that's coming down the pipe that's specific there, they want to make a, you know, a delegation to CAC on a matter. So really, I don't have an answer. I hadn't, you know, the way that I was looking at it was the ability for those delegates to perhaps speak to a matter when it's coming up. Like we said, at policy or at CAC and not necessarily having to wait until it gets to the board table where sometimes it might be too late, if you will, in quotations. So that really, I don't know what my fellow trustees feel about that, but that's a great question.
Madam Chair?
Sorry, trustee Antomasi, I just want to, I have trustee. I understand your hand is up, so are other people's hands. So I'm going to go through to other people in regards to this issue on delegations first. Trustee O'Hern, your note. How are you on this piece?
I think that if we're delegating to policy and we've already expressed our views in a policy meeting, we should not delegate to the board.
Okay, thank you. But you're okay with the ability to delegate to committee meetings?
Yes, I am. Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Duerta on this point?
I think Director Daley had a very, very excellent question and great point. You know, the decision point is the board. It's not the committee. So if there is an appeal to make on a particular issue, that appeal should be made to the board. Not only that, if we, if we leave, if we leave the possibility of delegating to the committee, then we add additional, additional question marks as to which committee, which delegations get approved or don't get approved. The, I would suggest that when we go through the selection of delegations, of which ones are approved and which are not. And I trust the discretion of the secretary and the chair in this, but the point needs to be made that we must take great care in making that choice to make sure that there's an equal balance of delegations on both sides of an argument. And that concerns me a little bit. But I'm mentioning it, but I trust that the chair, the chair's judgment and the secretary's judgment in that, in that process.
Thank you, trustee Duerta. Trustee, have I heard from trustee Duert? Oh, sorry, trustee O'Brien. Sorry, go ahead, trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through you, madam chair. Just to reiterate what trustee Duerta said, there is a caveat in there, in that comment, that the chair of the committee and the director will decide. So they could just say, why do you want to do policy? Why don't you just bring it to the board? I'm sure the chairs of SAL would just say, no, we don't take committees. I mean, there's a discretionary caveat there that I think covers that. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy, we haven't heard from you on this piece?
Thank you, madam chair. I think, I think it, it is important for people to delegate to committees. I think as it's written, it's a little open-ended and I think we need to think about it a little bit more and maybe qualify it a bit more. I'd say it's problematic if you delegate to the committee and you don't like the response that the committee brings to the board, then you delegate to the board. I think that is somewhat problematic and needs to, needs to be addressed. But in principle, I'm fine with people being able to delegate to committees.
Okay, thank you. We haven't heard from any of the student trustees. Does any of the student trustees want to weigh in on this? Okay, if you do, just let me know. Trustee Agnew, I see you have your hand up?
Thank you, through you, madam chair. The only thing I wanted to say was, if I use an example, and I hear my fellow trustees are saying with respect to not necessarily needing it to go to a committee that they feel it can go directly to the board, but there could be committees again like CAC where there may not be something that necessarily is a board decision, but it's something that they would like the CAC committee to consider. So there could be something coming there, it could be with respect to a program, it could be with respect to something. And they'd like to have the ability to, you know, make a delegation to CAC. For CAC to take under consideration, it could be, again, about something like the spec ed policy, or it could be under accessibility, something to that effect. And so it would be nice for a delegate to be able to come and speak to CAC about a concern. Again, that may not necessarily land with the board of trustees, but it could be specific to that committee's work. So that's just another example that I would ask, that people give consideration to.
So just in picking up off of that, trustee Agnew and what Director Daley said in regards to, is there, you know, if you delegate to a committee, then do you delegate again on the same issue to the board? If it's brought to the committee and it's a committee of the whole, could we add in another section that says how it will be dealt with and what the response will be?
Agree. I think you could put a response piece there. So it could be something to the effect of, you know, maybe another section where it would give options, just like we responded delegations right now at the board table. There could be response to delegation at the committees. So one of those options could be make a referral to the board. You know, one could be for a staff report, or it could be to receive his information. So you could, you could have similar type of responses to that delegation and one of them could include a referral to the board if that was one of the options available in response to delegations. So I don't know if that would help if we actually put a section in there that spoke to how to respond to delegations at committees.
I, just reading it and again to Director Daley's point, I think that that might be cleaner. So then going on what you've suggested is, is that delegations may be heard at public committees of the board on an item on the agenda or concerning matters within committees terms of reference. And we can clarify, it's the committee of the whole, which is the board. The chair of the committee in consultation with the secretary of the board or superintendent, and maybe it should just be in consultation with, and superintendent assigned to the committee will review delegation requests to determine eligibility. The responses to delegations will be as follows. Referral to, referred to the board, matter be referred to the board. Two, a staff report. Three, received as information. And then the last part can say then, it's not another point that anyone delegating to a committee shall not duplicate said delegation to, to the board or shall not make a further request to delegate to the board. How does that sound?
So that would be unless that first part of the response is, because the first part says it could be referred to the board, right?
Right.
So in absence of that, so if it's received as information, then it wouldn't be sent to the board for further delegation. Is that correct? Is that what we're thinking? Okay. It wouldn't be.
With the board, madam chair. So who's making this referral to the board? Is it the committee, the policy committee?
That's not a point of order, trustee Antomasi. No, it's not a point, it's not a point of order. It's not a point of order. It's a question.
Not establishing protocol here, madam chair.
It is a policy, so it's a, it's a, it's a question. Because we're actually discussing making changes to the policy and it hasn't been voted on yet. So not being said.
Do I have the floor, yes or no?
No, you don't have the floor, trustee Antomasi. And it'd be really great if you waited to be recognized. So now I'm going to just ask Marta, I've got most of this written down. Do you, do you have any issue with what has been said at this point, so I can go through with the rest of the trustees? So I'm going to go to each trustee and let me know if you're comfortable with it and if I need to actually put it up for you in the chat box so you can see what it says. Just let me know if, if, if the changes are good or if you need to see it. So trustee Agnew, you're okay with it? Trustee Duerta?
I'd rather leave everything the same, madam chair.
Okay. Trustee Duert?
Yeah, you heard what I said, madam chair, but I really would like to give this some more thought. So I'll just leave it at that right now because I'd like to see, I'd like to see the wording.
Okay, so if you want to, okay, so if you just give me a second, I will put it up.
I think we need to think, think through this process step by step.
Okay, it's in the chat box. I'll give everybody a second to take a look at it. So I'll just read it again for those folks that, for if anybody listening in. So underneath that point, it would say delegations to committees will be handled in the following manner. One, refer to the board. Two, request for a staff report. Three, received as information. Any delegations made to a committee shall not be duplicated to the board unless said item is referred to the board as outlined in one above. Trustee Carabella, are you okay with that?
No, I'm not, trustee Guzo. I'd like to keep that as we have it. I don't agree with the delegations at this point. Like it's, it's a, it's a lot. It seems like it's turning into board meetings. And so I'm, and it's a big decision. I think we need to think more on this.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Murphy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it as it, as it's changed. I, I think, yeah, this, this is, or this is not, well, potentially this is being referred to the board, right? So we really don't have time to think it over. Is that correct?
Yes. So you know, if the idea is, is that if, if we want more time to think it over, we either referring this with the changes to the board for next week and you have time between now, as we have seen, you know, changes have been made at the board table with the policy. Ideally, it would be great to deal with it here. But should people, you know, want to further reflect, they have until next week to, to change their mind, I guess.
Yeah, that's a good point. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the way it's changed.
Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Hern, your note.
Thank you through you, madam chair. I would like some more time to ruminate on this. I want to make sure any negative ramifications of this addition are thought through. So if that's the case of the board meeting, then I'll have some time to kind of digest it myself.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Kelly?
Thank you through you, madam chair. To start off, I think that there's been an increase in student delegations this year. And by allowing students and stakeholders in general to delegate at committees, it would be, it would help them make aware about the internal workings of Halden Catholic. And also speaking explicitly from a student perspectives, committees are normally meant to conduct work outside of the board or in our case, student senate to create greater efficiency in different initiatives, which is why the previous and current student trustees decided to create subcommittees. And with this sort of perspective, it would be more efficient to allow stakeholders to delegate at specific board committees in which responses can be determined with those committees. So I would ultimately be in favor of this amendment and whatnot.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. So trustee Agnew, obviously you're okay with this change. Trustee Duerta said no. I got trustee Duert. Trustee Antomasi?
Madam Chair, I have another comment later. If you can allow me.
Sure, let's hear from trustee Antomasi on these changes.
So I'm not for the changes. Because what we're trying to do here now is we're also asking to change our procedural bylaws. So that particular clause would require us to change the bylaws. I'm not for any of the changes.
Thank you, trustee Antomasi. Trustee Agnew, or sorry, trustee Duert, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add another thing. And this opens up another can of worms, like how are we going to receive delegations and who's going to track for all this committee meetings and, you know, do we follow the board bylaws for that? Delegations need to be informed on a Tuesday and then received, invited by Thursday. Do we follow all the same rules? We need to think about that. I'm a little concerned about that.
Okay. You have your hand up on this issue?
I'd like to, yes.
Trustee O'Brien has his hand up for this issue. Sorry, trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through you, madam chair. I'm looking at this change, this one bullet. And I'm looking at the phrase, public committees. I can see CAC welcoming this. I'm wondering how CPIC would react to this because once we vote on it. they would be obliged to take delegations, or at least have people send them delegations. Before we pass this bullet, I think we should hear back from them. Also, I'm not sure if this is included, but our multi-year strategic plan, it is a public committee as well. It's not, maybe it's it's not, I thought it was. Would people have the right to delegate there? So I'm wondering if if we need just to do a few more of this bullet before we actually bring it to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Trustee Carabella?
Yes, thank you. That's exactly what I was going to mention. So I'm glad that trustee O'Brien brought that up. We're making decisions for these committees that need to be aware and also see the ramifications for them. So as trustee Antomasi said about our bylaws, this is just a bigger picture. I think we're 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 getting off track of the whole delegation policy, because this is supposed to be delegation to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. I see you have your hand up.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. So what I'd like to suggest, and I'm happy for all the conversation that's happening tonight, and I know that at the end of it, we all have hopefully the same intention, which is to make our processes more transparent and provide an opportunity for our stakeholders and ratepayers to be heard in a more concise manner. And that's the idea behind the changes to this delegation policy. So what I would suggest is, there's been a lot of conversation this evening. It sounds like there's some trustees who need some time to digest and to reflect further. I too would like to reflect on some of the comments that have been made this evening. So perhaps we could take a look at moving this to our policy meeting in September. I I don't know if that would be, if there'd be an appetite for that. I think we've had some great conversations, perhaps that might be a great way to go. And then we have a chance to work through some of these questions.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Okay, I I think that's actually probably a great idea. Does, is there any objection to deferring this to the next policy meeting, given some of the changes? Yes, trustee Duert?
I like that idea, but there are a few more. If anybody has any other comments, I think we should finish it off now, so it gives us time to think. And in September, we can deal with it.
Okay, I I don't want to enter into too much more debate, trustee Duert, as it's eight sixteen. If we're going to defer it to the to the next policy meeting with further changes, I think that can allow other people to also put forward some other changes or do it at the next meeting just for the sake of of saving time.
Okay.
Who's, I'm not sure, who's madaming chairing me?
I am.
Trustee DeRosa, what can I help you with?
A very simple question. When is this policy supposed to have come up for review officially?
So this poli, well, again, it doesn't really matter.
It's under schedule. I'm just asking a very simple black and white question.
No, I understand, but anybody can bring forward a change to a policy.
I do understand that, but I'm asking, my question is very specific.
Last year.
When is it supposed to be coming up in a regular scheduled review?
Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, as shown right on the actual policy.
I didn't have it in the front of me, ma'am, okay? So thank you very much for the information and answers my question. Thank you.
So moving on to the next item.
May I have a point of clarification on on what we've just decided?
Sure, trustee Carabella, go ahead.
Thank you, just well, because of the breadth, the breadth of everything we've we've brought up. And so how will it be different in September? Are we going to receive some information or have some to further understand the implications of what we were just discussing about delegating at committees or the times? How is it going to be different than we get this package on the Friday night before the September policy meeting?
Well, I think at this point, trustee Carabella, everybody has the proposed changes in front of us. We'll have them now over the summer in prior to the September meeting. And based on some of the feedback that's already come now and some of the proposed changes and some of the moving parts that obviously, you know, need to be changed to align to it, I think it makes more sense to ensure that if we do agree to any of these changes, that it flows properly. So trustee Agnew has asked that it be deferred. So if there's any objection to it being deferred, I'd like to hear it now.
I object.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Anybody else object? Thank you. So we're going to move it on to the next policy meeting in September. Thank you, trustee Agnew. Moving on to item four point two, policy I dash one-one, international student admission requirements. So can I have somebody move for me, and I will read the motion here, that the policy committee recommends that policy I dash one-one international students' admission requirements, the fee-paying students, be forwarded along with amendments to the June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular board meeting for approval. Superintendent Loffs, I'll hand the floor over to you.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I actually think superintendent Cordero is going to start us off on this one, if that's okay?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Before I begin, I wish to acknowledge the invaluable contributions of the superintendent business services, senior manager planning services, the international student program staff, and my administrative assistant. The purpose of this action report is to provide for the consideration of the policy committee revisions to policy I eleven, international student admission requirements, fee-paying students, as recommended by staff. Over the last seven years, the Haltin Catholic District School Board has made significant strides in growing its international student program as it is transitioned to more active forums of student recruitment worldwide. In that same period, there have equally been a higher number of inquiries about how to distinguish varying types of immigration status from the classification of fee-paying students participating in the international student program. Accordingly, board staff, business services, school services, and planning services has updated policy I eleven, international student admission requirements, fee-paying students, to reflect these trends by making the following changes to the policy. First, refining the purpose and application and scope sections of the policy to reflect the Ministry of Education document, Ontario Strategy Caden twelve, International Education. Two, underlying the commitment of the board to offer successful candidates the same educational experience as other students of the board. And three, clarifying the admission process for fee-paying students attending the program and the expectations the board has of students attending the program. The revised policy I eleven, international students' admission requirements, fee-paying students, is attached for your review and consideration by the policy committee, superintendent of business services, Aaron Loft, Bronco Vidovic, the senior manager of planning services, and myself, as the superintendent of international student programs, are all welcome to answer any questions that you may have.
Superintendent Loffs, did you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I I'm good right now, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Seeing as there's none, I'll move to recorded vote.
Hands up, Madam Chair.
Uh, trustee Antomasi, I don't always see the hands up if you don't actually put it in the chat box. Is there an issue with your chat box?
It doesn't seem to be working. It it shows beside my name that I have my hand up. I'm not sure why you can't see it.
Well, there's there's several participants, trustee Antomasi, so go ahead, ask your question.
All right, my question goes to superintendent Cordero. Superintendent Cordero, in terms of the requirements, academic requirements, when we do we do an interview, how do we select these candidates that come from elsewhere?
They submit a profile of information about themselves. They describe their interests, they submit their marks, letters of reference. So there is a variety of information that they present to the international student program team. That that information is presented to me for further approval. And that that's essentially the process.
Follow up, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, trustee Antomasi.
So is there some sort of an efficiency test? How do we know that somebody from country X meets the academic requirement of us putting them into grade nine or grade eight or whatever grade? Is there an equivalency test? Is there, or are we just going on the basis of their marks that are sent from their schools? Are the schools that come from third world countries, other countries? Do are do they have a standing by which we can measure them? Because it would seem to me that if they come here and they're ill-prepared to function in our system, then it wouldn't bode well and they wouldn't be as successful candidates as they could be.
Excellent question, trustee Antomasi, through you, Madam Chair. So there are certain academic standards that have to be met within their home nations to be able to forward an application through their agents. That that's a process that is vetted through within the the international programs and those providers, as well as the agents representing those students, those families, those institutions. But even when they arrive in Canada, they do, we do set up appointments with the Welcome Center, whereby they will be assessed for their literacy and numeracy skills. And they will only be placed in those subject or those course areas where it meets with their academic capacities and abilities as demonstrated in those assessment pieces.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, trustee Antomasi.
Thank you, and we'll move it to a recorded vote.
Madam Chair, I believe I was in the lineup.
Oh, sorry, trustee DeRosa, I missed you. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Superintendent Cordero, my questions are very, very simple. First of all, do these changes serve to either firm up the standards for admission or loosen them up or or basically stay the same?
Now, the standards would stay remain the same, but they will be more closely aligned with federal provincial statutes and regulations and the best practices of our board and co-termist boards.
So may I have a follow up, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, trustee DeRosa.
Superintendent Cordero, do we expect the numbers of applicants to go up or go down or stay the same in in the coming foreseeable future?
Through you, Madam Chair, trustee DeRosa. Much will depend on the current climate, you know, how the different jurisdictions, different parts of the world are responding to vaccinations, the numbers of students who will have access to vaccinations. But rest assured, and I I should note that the requirements for acceptance into the international students' program, the requirements into for entrance into Canada are quite of a high standard. So I I I think as we get past the pandemic and we we return to some levels of normalcy, I don't know if we'll ever return to the previous normal, but we anticipate that numbers will increase. We will have to put an emphasis on promotions and continue to our efforts in connecting with agents and personnel across different school systems globally. So that that will be a commitment we will have to intensify as the doors open internationally for travel and for in-person conferencing again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, seeing as there's no further questions, thank you, superintendents. We'll move to recorded vote. Trustee Antomasi?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta?
In favor.
Trustee Trumpert stepped away. Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Duert?
In favor.
I am also in favor. The policy will be recommended to the board. Moving on to item four point three, can I have somebody move that the policy committee recommends that I dash two-three Catholic School Councils and Catholic Parent Involvement Committee be forwarded along with amendments to the June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular board meeting for approval? Trustee Agnew? Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by
Murphy.
Trustee Murphy, thank you. All right, so superintendent Denofol, you have the floor. Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. Trustees, as you are aware of, the policy I twenty-three was brought up last year, May of twenty twenty, with regards to the composition, well, they actually, the procedure for policy I twenty-three was brought up to the Board of Trustees last May, May twenty twenty. At that time, a decision was made to defer it back to the fall for their further consideration. November twenty twenty, number ten, twenty twenty, it was decided that the policy committee wanted more feedback from those Catholic School Council chairs through CPIC on the allocation of the number of non-Catholic parents to our Catholic School Councils. That feedback has been received and is an appendix A that has been provided to this board report. Overall, the results indicated that both secondary and elementary school respondents were in favor of increasing the number of non-Catholic parents or members of our Catholic School Council to more than two. CPIC members were also in favor of this increase. Each group has indicated that Catholic School Council should be comprised of a majority of Catholic parents and guardians. Furthermore, in addition, has been made to administrative procedure VI eighty-four under requirements that a copy of the Catholic School Council bylaws be provided at the first council meeting of each school year. Policy I twenty-three Catholic School Councils and Catholic Parent Involvement Committee is attached for review and consideration by the call's policy committee. Any questions? Sorry, thank you, superintendent Denofol. Yeah, we, it looks like they're starting. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you very much and through you, Madam Chair, and thank you, superintendent Denofol. I did just have one piece that I wanted to discuss or wanted to add. I'm not quite sure, but I sat on school council for a long time. And one of the things that I I find that sometimes schools struggle with from school to school is consistency. And I and I like the idea that the schools do have some autonomy to change their bylaws and to change things like that as they see fit for their school community. But the one thing that I think is really important is that if we're taking a look at the requirements, the, yeah, I guess that's the best word for it, is what we deem to be the requirements for joining the council as a member, that that be consistent. So I recognize that there's some recommendations or there's some pieces in the procedure that I don't want to dapple with, but I would ask that perhaps we take a look at the policy and just simply say something to the effect of there would be an expectation or there'd be a requirement for school councils to adhere to the requirements for membership on the councils. Does that make sense? Or am I talking out of both sides of my mouth?
From my past experience, I do think that's in the bylaws. So, right, in their bylaws, their membership would be, like, based on what the the policy has in it in terms of its makeup, right, if they have to be parents of that school. Your only member that's not a parent of the school could be your community rep, right?
Right, so if we took something, let's say, like the number of non-Catholic parents. or something to that effect, and we defined that in the procedure attached to this policy, I would just want to ensure that the individual councils adhere to that piece as well. That's, I think, probably what I'm looking for, so that if they do want to change things about the number of members they have or other things, you know, no problem reflective of their school community. But I would be more concerned if there was a change, let's say, that didn't allow any non-Catholic parents or or change the number that was permitted, something to that effect. And and that was the change that was made at the individual school. That's where I would be a little bit more concerned.
So right now, in the policy, it doesn't state the number of people or individuals. It's not in our policy, it's in our procedure.
Yes, correct. So could we ask the councils to adhere to the policies as set out here?
Well, I think all schools need to adhere to the policy and the procedures that are set out. And I think that it, I think that there is some room for growth and further development for administrators that we need to train to make sure we are following that, okay?
That's helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Moving on to trustee DeRort, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, I have several comments, but I did raise this thing a year and a half back when it came. So let me start with a couple of things. So first of all, we asked from policy, it went to CPIC and from CPIC it went to the schools last year and then came back. And I think it went again the second time because CPIC members changed. And so the I had the summary report in front of me here. It says nine secondary schools, 44% was a response from secondary schools and 35% was a response from elementary schools. So how can we consider this as the actual voice? We have received less than 50% response and we see majority of that is asking for an increase. So how can we consider that as an authentic number, number one? Number two is that.
Sorry, trustee Duarte, I'm gonna stop you for one second because we're actually talking about the policy right now. We're not actually talking about the procedure. So the comments about making changes are about the procedure. So right now, we're dealing with the policy.
Okay, okay, so we'll go to that later. Okay, then I'll just withdraw.
Okay, thank you, trustee Duarte. Moving on to trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through Madam Chair. And my questions were more about the summative report, if I'm permitted to comment on that.
Are, sorry, are you making reference in, again, is it in regards to the changes to the procedure versus the policy, though, trustee O'Brien?
It probably is more in regards to the procedure.
Okay.
But as always, my understanding that the procedure should echo the policy.
Well, the procedure is more detailed. The only thing I will say is, is in regards to it, regardless of how much feedback we get, one thing I think as trustees we should keep in mind is, is we had said if we were going to take the feedback that was given to us into consideration, if not, why are we asking for it, I guess, is is the real question. So if we want to, if we want, if we want to open up to the point to talk about the feedback, then maybe that's what we can do right now and we can deal with both the policy and the procedure all at once. Because I think that this is going to be a topic that needs to be discussed. And maybe, Marta, can you pull up the the feedback so we can have a look at it? And then trustee Duarte, if you you want to have a conversation in regards to to that, I'll put you back in the queue after trustee O'Brien. If we're gonna do this.
Okay.
That's a great idea, Madam Chair.
So.
Talking it all at once.
So we, so we did send it out to CPIC and superintendent Denofol, if I miss anything, please correct me. You've already kind of said this, so we sent it back to CPIC to get feedback from our our school councils. That is what we did. So CPIC provided for us. Everybody was given all of the actual physical responses today. However, it was summarized for us by CPIC because, as we could see, it was an open-ended question. So we got a lot of detailed responses. But the way it was summarized for us is is an actual, it's an accurate snapshot of what the feedback was given. As is in, if you had a chance to read all of the the comments that were sent in today, you'll see that it was an actual accurate, accurate, accurate summary of what the responses was. So one of the other things that I think we need to keep note to recognize as well is if you scroll down to the very bottom, one of the things that seemed to have been said consistently from those parents who participate that are non-Catholic indicated they did not feel valued or equal due to their non-Catholicity. That there might be some confusion at schools regarding whether non-Catholic members can vote. A few responses specifically indicated that they did not permit non-Catholics to vote, even though they held a school council seat. And that's not in line with the current policy. And I think superintendent Denofol just reaffirmed that there will be some work that will be done with school admin to ensure that there's consistency and that the policy and procedure will be followed. So that being said, I will now open it up, trustee O'Brien, I'll pass it back to you for your question in regards to the the feedback.
Thank you, through Madam Chair. Not so much a question, I read all the comments today. And to be honest, it's a fairly good summary, I wouldn't say excellent, but fairly good summary. The area that seems to be a little nebulous is in the term majority. Because it's used in the feedback a couple of ways. There are some parents that saw majority as being 50%, some saw it as being 50% plus one, some saw it as being three quarters, which is 75%, some said two thirds. And I wonder if the definition of majority seems to be a bit nebulous, even as it's quoted now in the procedures. And I was wondering, maybe it might be good to sort of tighten up what that means. Only comment, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien and superintendent Denofol. If maybe I can just preface this, I think we also need to remember that the procedures are not necessarily dictated by trustees. However, it procedurally is 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 done by staff. But superintendent Denofol, I read through, I'm not sure if you saw it differently. The majority that I saw were majority where the chair and co-chair needed to be Catholic. That's how I summarized it. Did you have a different view on on how that was summarized?
No, I, I agree that we want to continue. And I think the voice of our Catholic School Councils was that the chairs would continue to be Catholic.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Duarte, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, I had half a comment done, but I'll come back to that. So first of all, I received a 16-page report today, detailed report. And I'm just wondering from superintendent Denofol, when did we get that report? Why was it passed to us only today? Like 16 pages, I really didn't have time to read that. So that's my first question and I can answer together. The second thing was regarding the school council responses that we have, and I was talking about that. We have received responses from only 44% of our secondary schools and 16 and 35% of elementary schools. How can I consider that data to be valid to make a decision and say that it's a majority of schools need? Because the data we received were less than a majority of schools. So that was my my second comment there. And I like the idea of defining a number somewhere. And yes, I've been on school councils in Milton for past, for 10 years, not past, for 10 years. And yeah, I think it's been running really, really well with Catholics and non-Catholics on the school councils. And I'm not really confident that we should change it. But if superintendent Denofol could answer those two questions. First of all is, how do we consider this data valid? And when did you receive the detailed report and why was it not given to us earlier?
I'll actually answer that first part is, is because there, there was a summation given to us. And as you saw from the emails, if you had a chance to look at them, they needed to be summarized. So that is usually how we receive data from responses from any of our surveys when we survey parents. So it was given to us back when, I think, back in February. Unfortunately, we haven't had a chance to to get to this because our agendas have been so packed. So otherwise, this would have come sooner. Trustees asked for the raw data this morning, one trustee actually did. And because of that, it was shared with everybody. And just another point that I'd like to say is, what we came to learn as well is, is that we actually have lots of school councils that don't have only two non-Catholics, that a good majority of their their councils are made up of non-Catholics. So I guess the question that as trustees we would need to ask is, are we willing to make changes to those? If we're going to adhere to the same or ask that staff keep the same policy at limiting at two, then are we then saying to the school communities and their councils all across? And superintendent Denofol, you can, you can maybe elaborate a little bit more on how many schools exactly. Are we then saying to them that those council members could no longer participate in school council? We just need to know if we're going to be prepared for that. So those are questions that need to be asked. So sorry, superintendent Denofol, I didn't mean to to take up.
No, no, it's fine. So, so trustee Duarte, as trustee Guzzo shared, so the information was available and shared in February, okay? It was a summary report from CPIC and CPIC was very careful. They did wait for some time to get the information back from all Catholic School Councils, but we didn't receive it, even though we had numerous requests from them to share that so that we could bring some feedback back to the Policy Committee, okay? In terms of our Catholic School Councils, all of our schools have their Catholic School Councils and their numbers are actually good numbers, like, but it ranges. So we have some smaller schools that only have five or six Catholic members, but we have also have smaller schools that have 12 and 13 Catholic members in cap councils. So it depends on the size, okay? And so from the schools, some of all of our schools, there's eight schools that have more than two members that are non-Catholic. So definitely not following the the procedure, but there's obviously a will in their communities. Having said that, we don't really know because there's many schools that have two, okay? And so did the principals follow that procedure with their councils? That if other than two people came forward, they made that decision on how. I reached out to some, some said it was based on whose nominations came in first from the non-Catholic, that they were the ones that were included. Not to say that other non-Catholic parents couldn't sit on council, but maybe they weren't voting. But as we've heard, there's definitely some discrepancy with who can vote and if non-Catholic parents can vote. So that's part of the PD that we need to prepare and that I will, as I oversee the Catholic School Councils, that I will do in the fall with our principals.
Yeah, thank you. That was not my question. The question was, is right in front of us there. So if we had received feedback from only 44% of secondary schools and 35% of elementary schools, how can we say that's the majority? Because we are not receiving majority feedback. So we still have, we should have got at least 50% feedback from schools to say, okay, that's the majority now.
So trustee Duarte, well, I think Director Daley has his hand up. But in regards to all surveys that we send out, we never get 100% feedback. Director Daley, did you want to add to that?
I, I, I was just going to say that really what, what value or how trustees weigh the feedback that we received is really up up to trustees. There's no doubt that we didn't get feedback from every council. So I do think that's up to trustees to decide whether or not they think this is sufficient in order to make a change or whether they think it's insufficient to make a change.
Thank you, Director Daley. So trustee Carabella, you're next in the queue.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to say that this, this is very important, what we're talking about. And so, and I wanted to stress the consistency that's needed, that trustee Agnew did bring up. And I think that it shouldn't just stay in in the procedures, but in fact, this is something that needs to go into our policy. So I, I have an amendment ready, I'd like to propose an amendment to the policy. And listening to the feedback, but also listening to other feedback, not always just. Anyway, so this is the amendment I'd like to propose, that under requirements, we put in all members of the Catholic School Council or CPIC must be Catholic with a provision.
Trustee Carabella, you're gonna have to slow down so I can write this.
Okay, thank you.
All members.
All members of the Catholic School Council or CPIC must be Catholic with a provision for non-Catholic membership of up to 30%. For counts period, for councils with less than eight members, a provision may be made for a maximum of two non-Catholic members.
Maybe need for a maximum of two members. Two non-Catholic members. Okay, so just give me one second here, trustee Carabella, I'm gonna. Thank you for doing that. This, yep. Oh, under requirements, all members of the Catholic School Council or CPIC must be Catholic with a provision for non-Catholic membership of up to 30%. For councils with less than eight members, a provision may be made for a maximum of two non-Catholic members. Yes. I'm gonna post this in the chat right now so everybody can see it. And just maybe make sure that I get rid of some of my spelling mistakes because I typed too fast. Okay, trustees, it's in there. So let's have a discussion around this before we go on to a new a new point. So trustees, so trustee Agnew, we'll start with you.
Might have ordered, Madam Chair, I think you need a second.
Okay, so we want to handle this as a motion, okay? So trustee Carabella moves, who seconds?
I can second.
Trustee Duarte. Okay, now I'll open it up. Trustee Agnew.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I have a few questions, but maybe one question for trustee Carabella, is this specific to elementary or secondary or both?
I think it covers both. It's, it covers both, mostly a secondary if we want to lower the percentage for elementary because mostly there are Catholic, we can, but that.
Okay, no, I don't want to lower any percentages. So that's why I was asking about the secondary piece. I still think we need to absolutely keep in mind that there are schools that do have the majority of students that are not Catholic. So I just wanted to know if this was pertaining to secondary or elementary or both? And you've answered my question, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, trustee Agnew. Any other comments on this?
Madam Chair, just a comment.
Oh, no, you're gonna have to put your hand up in the queue there, trustee Duarte, trustee O'Brien, meet you too, trustee O'Brien.
Comment, I said, okay, okay, I'll put my hand up.
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through Madam Chair. Question, I'll to superintendent Denofol, superintendent Denofol, I have next to no experience on parent council, to be honest. How does a principal determine if a person is Catholic or not? Like, is it a baptismal certificate? I'm sure there's no letter from the priest. Is it just word of honor?
It's a good question, trustee O'Brien. So when one family's registered to the school, the parents on the registrations stipulate if they're Catholic or non-Catholic, okay? So that's how, because we. So that's how, because we didn't have it actually in the nomination form, we didn't have that stipulation to identify or you're Catholic or non-Catholic. So again, with some of the procedures with Catholic school councils in terms of the information and training I'm going to do, I'm going to put that on the nomination forms to even streamline that process. But that's how you would traditionally as a principal, you would look at the registration form for the family and confirm that. Or their database would have it too.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too have very little or no experience with parent council as well, so I'm Superintendent Knopf, help me understand the dynamics of a parent council as to, does everybody who gets elected or appointed to a student council get a vote?
Trustee DeRosa, so everyone on your Catholic School Council, your parents, based on the number of parents that you have permitted by your bylaws, do count as a vote?
Okay. I have a follow up. So I'm trying to make a distinction between hearing the everyone's voice, which I seem to get the message that that's the major problem is that non-Catholic parents want to be heard as opposed to having a vote. So a vote speaks to the the education system that we have that needs to somehow maintain a Catholic lens. But certainly where you have a majority of non-Catholic or a significant number of non-Catholic population in a school, that voice is significant enough to be able to to be able to hear it, to consider it, and to so on and so forth. So in my mind, I make a distinction in saying I want to satisfy the need for hearing people who are not Catholic. But to be able to affect Catholic policy, either directly or indirectly, the word Catholic is important in there. And that can only be affected by voting. So I'm trying to define a proper balance between reaching maintaining the Catholicity of our institution versus giving a voice to our equal members who come to us from other faiths. So that's what I struggle with. I'm not sure how that works out with what we're trying to achieve here.
Trustee DeRosa, just for clarity purposes, Catholic school councils don't vote on policy. Catholic school councils, their role is is to work with the staff in fundraising efforts, determining on how their school-generated funds are utilized, community engagement pieces. They're not leading any instruction, nor are they making any policy changes, except for what they really are doing is is bringing the school community together, the parent community together with the the school community and the students and making decisions on that. But I'll defer to Superintendent Knopf to further elaborate.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustee DeRosa, so are Catholic school councils made up of parents of our students? Exactly like what trustee Guzzo has shared is they are there to facilitate parent engagement within the community based on the objectives of that Catholic School Council for the year, okay? Where, like I've said it a couple of times tonight, where we've had, where some schools are saying non-Catholic people don't have, non-Catholic parents don't have a vote. I'm not sure if they stipulate something like that in their bylaws, but if they are members of your Catholic School Council, they should be voting members because they represent the students of that community. And they don't, they don't vote on policy. They just vote on the certain things about the school. And most councils don't even do anything to a vote. Everything is how do we get to consensus? So that's usually what's in the bylaw that most decision-making is done through consensus, not even voting, okay? But it's, again, that's the work that we need to further work through with the training that we should do with the principals in the fall.
Right. When I mentioned policy, I didn't really intend that they would be making policy. But certainly, the parent councils are a very important element of our student student life and daily life at school. And certainly, as trustees, we hold them dear to our heart as to what their opinions are and their recommendations are. So it's in that spirit that I that I struggle between on the issue that I brought up, vote or lack of participation. So anyways, that's my struggle. I will make decisions accordingly based on what I hear. All right? Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Trustee Murphy, I'm gonna go to trustee Duarte. See your hands up, but I'm gonna go to trustee Murphy as we haven't heard from him yet. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my experience with parent council is through my wife, who's been active in the parent council for quite a number of years. And basically, they're raising funds and they're supporting the principals and different activities. And as trustee Guzzo mentioned, supporting through the principal. So on sitting on the council, you have the principals, you have teachers. Last I checked, they're not baptizing any babies. They're basically raising funds and helping support the school, and they have a vested interest in that support because their children go to that school. You have families where one parent is Catholic and one parent isn't. You have families where those children are still baptized and being raised as Catholics, yet they're, one of their parents is not Catholic. So why does that negate their volunteerism? And that's what we're talking about. We're talking about a group of people who are willing to volunteer their time for the betterment of their children's school. So them being Catholic or not Catholic, we've accepted these people, their children into our school, and their parent wants to support the school. I really have difficulty understanding why we should be deciding or limiting that participation. Thank you.
May I have a point of privilege, Madam Chair, is that trustee Yan Tomasi has has his hand up and he's asking to be recognized at some point. Thank you.
That's fine. I will. I'm just not sure. I've seen him use the chat. But I started a new chat thread in regards to your change, your proposed change, trustee Carabella. So I haven't seen him put his hand up again. Trustee O'Hern Tsarota, we haven't heard from you yet.
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. Kind of on the heels of trustee Murphy, I've been on a parent council for ten years. And they're more of an advisory. They're the voice of the customer, so to speak, from the parents. They bring things to the table. Sometimes there's a vote as far as especially in Georgetown in regards to uniform or school dress code. So I think by putting a percentage on it, I think through my ten years, there was ebbs and flows. Some years, there were twelve parents that wanted to help. And why say no to that? Some years, there was only eight parents. So it ebbs and flows depending upon your school community. So to me, the more the merrier to help your school environment and to help their children in that particular school. People want to help. Why would we ever say no?
Thank you, trustee O'Hern Tsarota. I'm just checking to see who hasn't. Trustee O'Brien, have you spoken on this since?
I must have.
You have?
I have.
Okay, thank you. So then trustee Yan Tomasi. Trustee Yan Tomasi, you have the floor. Trustee Yan Tomasi, I'm gonna ask if you could use the chat box to put your hand up because it's very difficult to navigate when your hand is up.
Madam Chair, I am in the chat box. I was on at eight thirty-three and I was also.
Trustee Yan Tomasi, I started a new thread when trustee Carabella made the motion, so, and I stated that.
Anyways, through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Knopf and Secretary Daly. Can you please point me to Ontario Regulation six twelve where it states that the board has authority to dictate through policy how parent council is governed?
I'm sorry, trustee Yan Tomasi, if you know what it is, why wouldn't you just not state it as opposed to having?
The people that are our operation, the question is directed at the director and the superintendent, so let them reply.
So what is your question, trustee Yan Tomasi, exactly?
You heard my question. My question is, I want to know where it says Regulation six twelve stipulate that the Board of Trustees have governance over parent council. Given this given that parent councils are an independent body which have been given by the Ministry of Education the right to write their own bylaws. That allows them to be self-governance. So can you please show me somewhere that it states that we have authority over school council?
Director Daly, do you want to take that or Superintendent Knopf?
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. I can start. I don't believe trustee Yan Tomasi, I can point to Regulation six twelve to say trustees have authority over school councils. But as you would know, the Board of Trustees does set policy for the board. Councils or other parts of the board need to be in alignment with our board policies. What Regulation six twelve does do, as trustee Yan Tomasi has stated, is allow school councils to establish bylaws in certain areas. So I guess I would say because it doesn't say the board can't set a policy doesn't mean that it, or sorry, that it, that it's, let me rephrase that. Because it doesn't say in Regulation six twelve, the board sets policies specifically to school councils, that doesn't mean that they can't.
But are we not so supplementary through you, Madam Chair?
Follow-up question, trustee Yan Tomasi.
That is a follow-up question, Madam Chair. Follow-up question is as follows. How are we as a board, or how do we as a board provide governance over school councils? This given they have their own bylaws. There's nothing in the act that would suggest, remotely suggest, that we have governance over them. This given that they're only a body that provides recommendations to the principal. They do not provide recommendation to the board. They only provide recommendation to the principal, and you were a principal, so you would know that.
Sorry, trustee Yan Tomasi, I'm gonna correct you. I'm looking at Regulation six twelve. And under subsection two, point two, it says a school council's primary means of achieving its purpose is by making recommendations in accordance with this regulation to the principal of the school and the board that established the council.
Madam Chair, you need to read that in the whole. The only person that parent council reports to is the principal. It's the principal that brings the matters before to the board.
Do you have another question, trustee Yan Tomasi? If not, we're moving on to the next person.
I need an answer.
Trustee, Director Daly already answered that question, so we're gonna, I'm gonna assume then that's the end of your question, so we're gonna move on. Trustee Duarte.
Through you, Madam Chair. So I wholeheartedly agree with trustee Murphy and trustees Tsarota. Over my past years of experience in schools, never had an issue. So I'm just wondering why we decided to change things in this policy and procedure. She left it the same. Principals are doing a great job. Leave it to them. But here we are. And we are discussing and debating this for the past year. So my thing now is I'm sitting in high school. There was a question from trustee Agnew about high school. I think this thirty percent is gonna be really good for high school because high schools generally have fifteen members, twenty members, and thirty percent of fifteen is like, it's one-third. So it's five members, anytime better than existing two. So I think it'd be really good for high schools. I've sat on high school councils myself. And high school councils really fluctuate from day one, having twenty members to the next meeting, it can be ten members. So it keeps changing there. So I think thirty percent is good. And another thing, yeah, and I'd be really comfortable with that. Another thing that Superintendent Knopf talked about was the consensus. Over my years, I never, I don't remember voting even once. It's always been consensus. So the question of, I think everybody should get a right to vote. We need to have more non-Catholic members. And I think the thirty percent would be a really good number. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Duarte. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. I wrote down some thoughts earlier, thinking that this was probably gonna come up for discussion. And I just wanted to repeat, I just wanted to go through those so I don't forget where I am. But so bear with me because I don't normally read from something, but I feel very strongly about this point as we take a look at the composition of our Catholic school councils and we take a look at the dedication of the parents who want to serve on those councils. And listen, the reality is that religion should not be a barrier. It should not be a barrier in society. It shouldn't be a barrier in our communities and not in our lives. Our schools, our curriculum, our policies and procedures are rich in faith and Catholic values. I don't think we need to fear the deterioration of our Catholic faith by a change in policy that would see more opportunity for non-Catholic parents to participate in our school councils or on CPIC for that matter. If we should be so very lucky as to have non-Catholic parents in our system who have chosen to send their children to our schools, we need to embrace them and all of their talents and not discriminate on the basis of religion, their inclusion in full participation in our school communities, including school council. I've heard from admin who have struggled to get enough parents to volunteer for council sometimes and to be consistently reliable and contributing members. And yet we create or looking to create further issues with participation by putting up barriers because of someone's religion. Parents have decided to send their children to our schools, direct their taxes and put their faith and ask for their child's educational experience. I know many parents who are Catholic via baptism, who have had their children enrolled in the Catholic school system and who are not even active practicing Catholics. But their eligibility on council is there because of a certificate that says that they've been baptized. Why do we assume that non-Catholic parents may lead us down a non-faithful path? Councils serve to represent the best interests of the school, community, students and staff when initiatives are undertaken and decisions are made. And if someone has their child in our system, like I said, they must believe that they will make decisions that are in line with the values of our Catholic education. We need to trust in them as members of our school community who have chosen to dedicate their time and energy into serving our schools. In secondary schools, we know for a fact that we have in some cases a student population that is more non-Catholic than Catholic. And again, the parents of these students who want to be fully committed to participate as active members of our councils should be afforded that opportunity. If you're happy to take their tax dollars and their votes, you should be overjoyed at the prospect of encouraging their full involvement in whatever manner they choose to participate at the school level. Some will say there are opportunities outside of council, like volunteering for events or fundraisers or uniform swaps, but that feels like tokenism. Here you can give us your time and efforts, but only for these tasks we deem acceptable for non-Catholics, rather than embracing all and opening up participation opportunities for as many as possible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So whoever's in the chat, I'm gonna honor, and then we're gonna move on and take a vote on this. So trustee, I know you have, I'm sorry?
Will you include me as the closing remarks?
Sure. I would ask that we keep it brief because this isn't a board meeting and I really don't want to have to time everybody. Trustee DeRosa, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I think I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. Thank you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Knopf. Superintendent Knopf, I looked at the comments today and they're all kind of very different. There are some parents that speak of parent council as being strictly fundraising and it has nothing to do with Catholicism or the Catholic issues. Other comments say that it is crucial that we maintain our Catholicity on our parent council. So I'm trying to weigh what the feeling is, but I'm just gonna ask you, you've had a lot of experience on council, teacher, principal. What do you see as the Catholic issue on a council? Do you see that as being key? Is it, like, where do you stand with that? Do you see that as being key? Is it, like, where do you stand with that? I'm interested to know because, again, I have very little experience with parent council. I appreciate your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, the mandate of the Catholic School Council and what they do for a specific school is rooted in what the goals and objectives of the Catholic School Council are together with the principle for that school. So as you know from experience that I have from opening up a new school, there was a lot that was rooted in establishing that Catholic school community in the Alton Village community. So that's what that council was about, and it was about the traditions that they want to see upheld. And that's where I would say that Catholicity. But our Catholicity in our Catholic school is rooted on who we are as a Catholic school system. As a Catholic school, we're not going to deviate from what's been set out by our school board, by our Board of Trustees for how we run our schools, which includes everything that's rooted in our faith. Okay, but the Catholic School Council isn't usually voting on that, those pieces. Those pieces are naturally happening in our Catholic school community, just because of how we run our schools. So that's where the, that's the, like, those are the things that we vote on. And like I said before, most of it is done through consensus. It's bringing information to council or parents bringing that to, to our attention, and then as a school, you're working together with them. I hope that answers that question for you.
Thank you, and through Superintendent D'Alfo.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Okay, everybody's had a chance to speak. Trustee Carabella, do you want to just finish on this?
Yes, very briefly, I'm bringing it from the procedure to policy because it's important for the consistency and a clear message. And I think it's very reasonable, and it allows a lot of participation either way. And I think my fellow trustees who have spoken in favor have done it justice, so I'll leave it at that. We can go to a vote.
Thank you, trustees. So we're going to vote in regards to adding now new language into the policy as prescribed above. So I will start with trustee Antumasi. Trustee Antumasi.
I'm back. So what are we voting on?
Trustee Carabella's addition to the policy.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Carabella?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Chernotta?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Duert?
In favor.
I am also opposed. So that's five, two, three, four, five. So at this point, then, the procedure then will be changed. I'm assuming Superintendent D'Alfo to reflect the proposed change that's been put forward here in the policy. That's correct, trustee Guza will make that change. Thank you. So is there any other comments in the remainder of the changes in the policy? There's nothing new other from, apart from what was presented back in, I think it was December. Is there any other comments? Okay, so we'll take this policy to a vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Chernotta?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Duert?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi?
In favor.
I am also opposed. However, five to four, the, the policy will be brought to the next board meeting. Thank you very much, Superintendent D'Alfo. Moving on to policy I dash two six. Sorry, I'm just loading here. Student trustees on the Halton Catholic District School Board. Can I have somebody move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy I dash two six? Student trustees on the Halton Catholic District School Board be forwarded along with amendments to June fifteenth, twenty one, twenty twenty one regular board meeting for approval.
I'll move it.
Thank you, trustee O'Hearn Chernotta, seconded by.
Trustee Agnew?
Trustee Agnew, thank you. I know it has my name on this, but I'm going to hand this over to trustee Kelly. Trustee Kelly, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and through you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, as you all know, we have heard from many delegations regarding policy I dash twenty six. Student trustees on the Halton Catholic District School Board throughout the year. I would like to thank all of the delegations for contributing to such an important conversation. Halton Catholic is a diverse and interreligious school board, and to exclude such diverse students is unjust. To quote one of our delegations from the April sixth board meeting, quote, "The student trustee team makes decisions that affects all HCDSB schools, therefore affecting all students of all religions in these schools. There is no form of representation on the student trustee team without non-Catholic students," end quote. "The purpose of this policy is to provide the direct representation of the interests of students on the board in accordance with the provisions of the Education Act, Ontario Regulation seven dash seven, and any guidelines issued by the Minister of Education under paragraph three point five of subsection eight, bracket one bracket of the Education Act. Nonetheless, many students do not feel adequately represented. This includes the limits and restrictions on this policy that prevent non-Catholic students from being potential student trustee candidates. Halton Catholic District School Board has had accessible information and education to all religious demographics at the secondary level in nineteen eighty four. Since then, the cultural and religious diversity of students has only continued to grow, and many Halton Catholic District School Board students are non-Catholic. Many of these students' parents are also ratepayers who provide funding for the board. It would be accurate and equitable to include non-Catholic students based upon the student population who are not represented at a board level. According to policy two dash forty nine Equity and Inclusive Education, it mentions that the board will, quote, "examine and remove any barriers that exist preventing full participatory school-community relations, including obstacles associated with any systemic discrimination," end quote. Therefore, including them in, would be in line with supporting non-Catholic students who do not have access to the opportunity of candidacy for the role of a student trustee. Policy I dash twenty eight, twenty six, student trustees on the Halton Catholic District School Board is attached for review and consideration by the Policy Committee." Thank you. I am open to any questions now.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. I'll open up the floor. Okay, so let's bring this to a vote then. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Duert?
Opposed.
Trustee Antumasi?
Opposed, Madam Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn Chernotta?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
I am also in favor. However, the policy does not, will not be brought to the board meeting. Thank you, trustee Kelly, for, for your work on this. Much appreciated. So moving on to item four point five. This is opening and closing exercises. So can I have somebody move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy II dash oh nine, opening and closing exercises be forwarded along with amendments to June fifteenth, twenty twenty one regular board meeting for approval?
Trustee Agnew?
Trustee Agnew moves, seconded by
Duert.
Trustee Duert. Thank you. Trustee Kelly, I'll pass it over to you again.
Thank you so much. So good evening, everyone, once again. I just want to mention that as models of the Catholic faith in Halton, Ontario, and Canada, we must take proactive steps to build a society of equity and justice by uplifting the voices of Indigenous people and by honoring and nurturing the land and their gifts. This is in line with the recommendations of the Commission for Justice and Peace of the Canadian Conference of Catholic Bishops and the Canadian Catholic Indigenous Council. To quote the Canadian Conference of Catholic Bishops, "We must foster relationships in charity and in solidarity with Indigenous people." Many school boards across Ontario already call for the land acknowledgements in their schools, including but not limited to Toronto Catholic, Durnham Catholic, and Algonquin and Lake Shore Catholic. Halton Catholic should be among these Catholic school boards, and in twenty twenty one, the staff of Halton Catholic has created a powerful and beautiful land acknowledgement video that can be played in daily announcements. The history and struggles of Indigenous people in Canada and in the local Halton community needs to continuously be learnt, understood, and acknowledged. Having daily land acknowledgements is an important first step to nurture this collective understanding. So the newly drafted policy I dash oh nine, opening and closing exercises includes the amendment of included mandatory land acknowledgements in opening or closing exercises. And the Halton Catholic School Board must acknowledge the ancestral lands that it is on. Land acknowledgements date back centuries for Indigenous people, and having it in the opening or closing exercises is an important first step to recognizing and honoring the original inhabitants of Canada. Policy II dash oh nine, opening and closing exercises is attached for review and consideration by the Policy Committee."
Thank you, trustee Kelly. I'll open the floor to questions. Trustee Duert, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, thank you. Just to one thing, this policy applies to all schools under the application. It applies to schools. So I'm just thinking that this is quite limiting, and I'd be happy to support this if at all we change the word land acknowledgement shall form to may form, because everything else is may form. Scripture reading is may form. Everything else is may form. So if this changes from shall form to may form, I'd be really happy to support that.
I'm sorry, trustee Duert, I just want to understand. So you're stating it changed from shall form to may form?
May form, yeah.
But formal prayer shall form, and I think the, the addition is that the spirit of what trustee Kelly has put forward is that it is said either at every opening or closing exercise, whereas scriptural and spiritual readings are in addition to prayer, they're not to be done necessarily. So this would be a requirement that it's done?
No, I'm not, I'm not debating that, Madam Chair. I'm not debating that. What I'm trying to say is this policy applies to schools. Because under the application, it does say school. So it's kind of limiting schools for every meeting, school council meetings, or anything they do in schools to have the land acknowledgement. Yes, schools can do it if they have the time, but if they want to have a quick council meeting, do we really need a land acknowledgement every time? It's up to the principal to decide. So if you say land acknowledgement may form part of the opening exercise, that gives a principal discretion. That's my, my point, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, trustee Duert. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Does this apply to our opening ceremonies at the board all the time?
I, no, I believe that's the bylaws that have to be changed. Trustee DeRosa, they, they are prescriptive of, of how the meetings are started.
I'm wondering whether we should take the opportunity to, to to do that at some point in time. Maybe now is not the opportune time, but at some.
Trustee DeRosa, we have it on this agenda. If we can get to it, you can propose that at that point tonight. I think that would be a very welcomed, given the climate and what's been going on. I think that would be a welcomed amendment.
I would be delighted. Thank you.
Trustee Agnew?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. I actually wanted to change the wording from shall to will. And I think just for an understanding that there is a version of the land acknowledgement that was played this evening that is a shorter version. It's just over a minute long. So I don't see a minute of an opening exercise or a closing exercise impacting the time that we're spending in a meeting to have our land acknowledgement. It is an absolutely beautiful video. It's very, very well done. It shows a range of diversity of our students, which I think is also very important, and it's, it's one minute. So if we can't find one minute to have that land acknowledgement as part of an opening exercise or a closing exercise, I think that's a bigger issue as far as time management is concerned. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Antumasi?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the question would go to boss Lori Nar, or failing that, Secretary Daly. Is that resource available throughout the board, both elementary and secondary?
I think either Director Daly or even Ms. Swenden could answer that.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Certainly, the, the video that we've created for the land acknowledgement can be made available to every school. You know, I guess another option would be if schools chose not to use the video, they, they could also do a verbal land acknowledgement as, as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee Antumasi, do you have a follow up question?
I have a follow up question, Madam Chair. So are we now saying that we would be giving all schools the option to say it verbally and or to import it from our board site at every opening ceremony, whether it be in the morning, or whether or not it would be at a function like a graduation? So are we also including graduations here?
Director Daly, maybe you can speak to what this policy encompasses, because it's, it's school level particularly.
Yeah, thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. So I, I think this policy is specific to the opening exercises or, or closing exercises, specific to how we start the school day. So we start the day with prayer, with the anthem. At one time, we started the day with prayer and anthem and the oath of allegiance. So I think the intent here would be, it would be how we would start each school day. In terms of how the requirement is written, trustee Antumasi, it is a little bit open ended in saying that a land acknowledgement shall form part of the opening exercise. It doesn't necessarily say video or verbal. But this policy is really directed towards how we start the school day or close the school day.
All right, so, sorry, Madam Chair. So an opening, opening exercise would suggest any event that opens and is the beginning of something. So I agree with you that perhaps we're thinking in terms of an opening exercise in terms of opening the school day. But if we're having an after-school event such as parent council or, or school, school parent council, and or a graduation, and or a special event, are we going to be including? If we're, if we're saying the National Anthem and we're saying the oath of citizenship, are we not now obliged to also say the land acknowledgement?
Trustee Antumasi, even if it is, I, I, I think the, the question is, is, is how it's interpreted and implied, and I think Director Daly just clarified what this policy encompasses. But Director Daly, I'll let you answer this question.
And I'll try, and then I'll, maybe I should have checked before I tried to answer, but I will try and answer and then double check. I think the reg, reg two ninety eight that's referenced in the policy is specific to the opening exercises at the start of the school day as opposed to other events that might take place in the school building.
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Um, at the beginning, when trustee Duarte suggested, um, well, that he would change it to may, um, I, I would like to second that. If he proposes it again as a, uh, an amendment, I would like to second that, that we say land acknowledgements may form part of every opening and closing exercise.
Trustee Duarte, are, are you, were you proposing an amendment?
Uh, yes, I'll propose the amendment to change shall to may.
And it's seconded by, uh, trustee Carabella. So, um, I'm going to start a new speakers' list and I'm going to comment first. I am actually really, really shocked and surprised that we're even having this conversation, given everything that has transpired in the last little bit. Um, we talk about truth and reconciliation. It's Indigenous History Month.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
I'm speaking to this. I have the opportunity to speak to this trustee O'Brien, if that's what your point of order is going to be about. I started a new chat on emotion.
Point of order. Uh, if you're going to speak to this, you need to hand the gavel.
I'm not debating. I'm speaking to it. I have the right to speak to emotion on the table.
So are you really on that?
You can only ask questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, I got a question.
Pass it over, point of order. Pass it over then, trustee Duzo.
I'm sorry?
Um, trustee, point of order.
Hi, trustee O'Brien, I will take your point of order and I will ask a question. Trustee Duarte, are you suggesting that we shouldn't make the land acknowledgement part of the regular opening?
Madam Chair, I never said that. I said the land acknowledgement needs to be there. This is native land we are on. We really need to support our native, uh, brothers and sisters. My point was that I would like to give some flexibility to our principals and administrators to use it. And if at all they want a quick meeting of, uh, quick, uh, community gathering, they don't, their hands don't need to be tied. So that's my only thing. As I said, may form. That's all.
Okay, so just, just to clarify, though, uh, trustee Duarte, Director Daley clarified what this policy is in regards to. It's for the opening of the school day. So it's not... So do you still have that view that it should be may?
Yeah, I would think it's may, because, uh, again, it's, I would like to leave it to the principals.
So then it's at their discretion whether or not they use the land acknowledgements?
I would say so, Madam Chair, yes.
Okay. I'll open up any other questions in regards to this proposal?
Madam Chair, I think I'm in the queue.
Or is it in regards to this change, trustee DeRosa?
It wouldn't be anything else, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead, trustee DeRosa.
So I, uh, now I'm, I'm, my first question to you, Madam Chair, is where down the line does the opening ceremony for the board, uh, come into play?
So that's not, it's not really part of this, trustee DeRosa, but it's the bylaw. It's the last action item. I don't know.
It comes into play indirectly. Okay, so let me make my point.
Okay.
I think there is no question whatsoever. Uh, and to, um, trustee Antomasi's point is that the, the title of this, this subject is opening and closing exercises, which to me implies, um, a general statement that implies that it, anytime there is an opening exercise, be it that the opening of the schools, the school day, or any other event, this is what this policy addresses. I may be wrong. I'll stand corrected. But I think we're debating here whether, whether we should acknowledge, uh, do a land acknowledgement as part of our regular routine, whether it be during the day, uh, at opening of schools, uh, or at other events. And there should be no doubt about that, that that land acknowledgement should be part and parcel of our normal process. Uh, I understand, uh, trustee Duarte's, uh, comment about leaving the discretion to the principals, because there is legitimately a timing issue. And I have no sense of how much time this would add to the day. But, and it certainly would add some time to the day. Maybe it's not the video. Maybe it's something shorter. But I would insist that we make this, uh, policy to make sure that the land, land acknowledgement becomes part and parcel of all our opening ceremonies. Uh, and to, and to, and to, uh, trustee Duarte's support, I, you know, let's not make it a long exercise. Uh, let's figure out what we want to say, but that acknowledgement has to be part and parcel. And it has to be timely to his, to, to, to his point. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. But just to clarify, um, the, the land acknowledgement is that it's left it open-ended so that principals do have the discretion to use whichever land acknowledgement they choose. It doesn't say that it has to be the video. It just says a land acknowledgement. But what it does say is that it shall form part. The suggestion that trustee Duarte is making is that it's not required, that it's may form, which gives principals the discretion on whether or not they do the land acknowledgement on a daily basis. So that's what's been proposed.
Thank you for your, your interpretation. I don't, uh, I didn't really interpret it that way, but my point is made, Madam Chair, is whether through the video or whether through any other means, we have to make it part of our process. Uh, just let's figure out how to do it and make sure that it, there's no doubt around the fact that we need to do it. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Uh, trustee Kelly? Trustee Kelly, are you there?
My apologies. I realized I was just muted the whole time I was talking. Uh, thank you. Thank you. And through you, um, Madam Chair. Again, as I already stated, I believe that this needs to be mandatory. I would also agree with trustee Agnew's original proposition of, but that is for another point. Um, land acknowledgements do need to be a requirement. This would not be authoritarian or forceful in any way, shape, or form. As I've already stated, that school boards, such as the largest school board in Ontario, um, Toronto Catholic, already require daily land acknowledgements. In light of the findings of the remains of two hundred and fifteen Indigenous, Indigenous children over the weekend, it is especially important that all schools need to add this. It would only add one to two minutes. This should not take too much of, uh, school time during a day. And I would urge the Board of Trustees to ensure that it needs to be a requirement so that there is no cop-out in the pursuit of justice and the pursuit of the truth and reconciliation movement. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee, uh, Kelly. Um, trustee Duarte, uh, you get to, to close on this.
Uh, actually, Madam Chair, I, I want to propose, uh, that since it's clarified that this can be used only in the opening, uh, of the school day, um, I, I, I am okay to withdraw that, uh, without this motion, provided, uh, trustee Carabella is okay with that.
Okay. Trustee Carabella, are you okay to have it withdrawn?
Um, well, that's a surprise. Um, I think that by the way it was with may, as it leaves it up to the principal was a, a, a good thing. I mean, we, we can...
So is that a, is that a yes or a no, trustee Carabella?
But if trustee Duarte wants to pull it out, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that being said, is there any further discussion on any other changes in this policy?
Madam Chair, I have a point of order. Was the motion seconded by trustee, uh, Duarte?
Uh, it was not seconded. It was moved by trustee Duarte. I seconded.
My question is, was it seconded?
Yes, it was. And we asked trustee Carabella.
And it belongs to the board.
Right. So let's take it to a vote then, trustee Antomasi, because we're in the spirit of collaboration tonight. So let's do this. Uh, trustee DeRosa?
I'm sometimes easily confused, Madam Chair. What am I voting on now?
So trustee Duarte wanted to withdraw his, um, his amendment that he put forward. Trustee Carabella was amenable to it. Um, however, uh, trustee Antomasi has raised a procedural, uh, issue. So we are taking a vote, um, on the motion that trustee Duarte had put forward to change the word shall to may.
Now, I see. So in view of his withdrawal, then I'll vote against, because that achieves the point.
Absolutely. Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Trustee Duarte?
I'm opposed to my own motion.
Trustee Antomasi? Trustee Antomasi? I'll go back. Trustee Carabella?
I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
Trustee Murphy?
Uh, I'm opposed to the motion to change.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Ohren Chernota?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Antomasi, are you there?
I am back. Opposed.
Uh, and trustee, um, I will change my vote to opposed as well then. I guess abstain is the same thing, so opposed.
I am also imposed. Uh, so the, we will revert back to the original proposed, uh, language as presented. So now we'll take a final vote on, uh, the policy to be presented to the board.
Madam Chair, sorry. I have, I will try and type my hand up fast enough, but I do have another amendment I'd like to put forward.
What is that, trustee Carabella?
So in the requirements where it says formal prayer shall form a part of every opening and closing exercise, I'd like to add and include the Our Father.
Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
I, I will second, Madam Chair.
Do we have any questions on this?
I could speak to it for a moment.
Sure. I, I, but I, this all seems very reminiscent of, of a previous policy meeting we had when we took out the, uh, oath of citizenship. So go ahead, trustee Carabella.
I would just like to propose this change, uh, to bring the Our Father, uh, into the school as a formal prayer. It is the most sublime prayer as it is taught to us by our Lord. It takes twenty seconds actually, and, um, it will provide fruit and direction for all our students. Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make an amendment to this.
Sorry, sorry, trustee O'Brien. I went through the thing wrong. Uh, it's trustee Agnew is actually ahead of you. My apologies.
I accept.
You know what? That's okay, Madam Chair. I will cede to trustee O'Brien.
Okay, thank you, trustee O'Brien. Again, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. I would like to make an amendment to this amendment.
Okay, so just one second, trustee O'Brien, so I can make sure I get it properly here. Uh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, if I could see it, her, uh, sorry, trustee Carabella's amendment said, including the Our Father?
Yes, and shall include the Our Father.
And I would just like to put after that, in the same sentence, recited in an Indigenous language.
Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Is there any questions on this?
Can I speak very briefly? Okay. In light, echoing what trustee Kelly said, in light of the events of the past week, this is an opportunity for us to acknowledge the fact that the Our Father has many, many times been translated and many times been said in many native prayer services. And this would be an opportune time for our students to be exposed to one of our late Native languages, over time that would be learnt, recited, and, um, I think we have nothing to lose by an amendment like that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, so we'll open this up. Uh, trustee DeRosa?
Actually, it's my turn, Madam Chair. I cede to trustee O'Brien.
Oh, sorry. You're right.
Sorry. Thank you. Uh, thank you and through you, Madam Chair. I'm not in opposition of, uh, of this. However, I would, I would like to make this comment that I do believe before we start adding, um, um, an abundance of, um, items that are going to be, uh, required to be, um, spoken by students, that this go to, uh, CAC for their input as well. Um, I think that there's a consideration there that needs to be made for students who may struggle, uh, verbal, that may struggle with, um, with languages that may, and I, I think that we need to take a look at how that is going to be addressed, if we are going to be adding, um, additional prayers, um, and especially additional prayers in a different language. Uh, that's, um, I, I just have a concern about that expectation of our students without properly vetting, um, how that's going to be supported for those students.
Thank you, trustee, uh, Agnew. Uh, Director Daley, I see your, your hands up.
Um, just, just a comment that I think I do have to make. I, I, I think I heard a trustee say that we need to, um, include the Our Father in the opening exercises in order to introduce it to our students. Uh, our, our students say the Our Father at just about every grade level, um, maybe not to start or close the day every day, but to suggest that the Our Father is not part of our regular practice, I think is inaccurate. And quite honestly, I think it diminishes the role that our principals and Catholic teachers play in our schools.
Thank you, Director Daley. I, I can attest to the fact that the Our Father was one of the first prayers that my children learned, uh, not only in church but also in school. Um, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Uh, well, we've, uh, I, I think we've, uh, I'm still on the same topic, but I think we've diverted, there's a couple of points that have been made that, uh, so I want to take it back to the idea of saying it in, um, an Indigenous, uh, language. Um, I know what trustee O'Brien is trying to achieve, uh, here, and the intentions are, are, are good, and I would, uh, support that. I'm just hoping that that would be taken in the right light from, uh, our Indigenous leaders. I don't know whether we can check that or not.
Actually, I think that's a, a good suggestion, trustee DeRosa, is that maybe we, we consult with that change to...
Anyways, because of, uh, the fact that somebody would have to translate it.
It would have to be taught to our students. That's right. And how would it be taught to our students? It's a good point.
Just the sensitivity around the whole issue, especially these days. Uh, the acknowledgement of our Indigenous people goes back in history for a long, long time for many reasons. Unfortunate that, that, uh, in order to, to push the recognition of our, um, of this founding nation, uh, or original nation, um, we have to experience events as we have in, in the last little while. Anyways, um, it's never too late, uh, to give recognition where recognition is due. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, trustee DeRosa. So are you suggesting then that we send this out for, uh, feedback?
I'm, I'm, well, I don't know what the pro, all I'm suggesting is the principle of it. I think somebody should, um, uh, let, uh, an Indigenous leader or a group of Indigenous leaders, uh, know that would, this is what our intention is and, um, get their blessing. I'm not saying let's not say our, uh, 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 recite the Our Father. I'm saying...
No, no, I'm not implying that you, that you've said that at all. I, I'm, I'm asking to clarify.
I would support, I would support, uh, trustee Carabella's, uh, motion. I'm just saying that if we're gonna, if we're gonna say then, uh, if we're gonna say Our Father in an Indigenous language, uh, we should at least let them know that that's what our intention is and get their input on it.
Okay. Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Uh, so who have we not heard from on this? Uh, trustee, uh, trustee, or sorry, Director Daley, did you have your hand up in regards to this? Or did I already catch you?
Uh, I, I, I think I made the comment I, I wanted to make, so I'll, I'll hold for...
Okay, thank you. Trustee Agnew?
Um, my hand is up.
Thank you.
A point of order, Madam Chair. I do have my hand up on this, uh, this addition.
So do I.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
I missed you.
Pardon?
Sorry, I missed you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so trustee Carabella, trustee Agnew, um, my apologies. That was my mistake. Trustee Carabella, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm not saying that we don't say the Our Father in our schools, Director Daley, and, uh, and all the trustees, of course. Our children are, are taught that. What I'm bringing... Our children are, are taught that. What I'm bringing, bringing it back to the beginning of the day, that we start our day with the Our Father. And I, I do appreciate trustee DeRosa's suggestion that it be sent to uh, to see what uh the leaders in the indigenous community think of, of doing this. I, I think that um maybe like when it's Indigenous Month or on special occasions, I'm not sure if on a regular uh basis that um we could have that because of just learning that. Thank you.
Thank you, uh trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, madam chair. I'd like to suggest that we consider sending this out for um consults. Um, as I stated, I think that CAC needs to review this because there's some components there um that I think that we should weigh in on, uh that CAC should weigh in on. Uh, we have our indigenous committee that I think should uh be part of this conversation. Um, so you know, there's several changes that are being suggested here with respect to opening exercises. Um, and it would be my suggestion that we send this out for consultation so that we can um ensure that um we hear back from our, yeah, from our groups and our committees and our stakeholders on what their thoughts are around these suggested changes.
Okay, so that's your recommendation trustee Agnew then?
Yes, it is. He didn't, uh, okay, so I'm gonna ask. I'm, I'm still talking, sorry trustee DeRosa, sorry. Um, yes, that's my recommendation. I just think that there's um a good way of doing that. We've had some good conversation here. Uh, but there are several changes that are being uh made, like I said, and they do impact. Um, they, they could have a, a great impact on a number of our students, and I just think that it would be important to solicit um feedback and consultation from some of those groups. Thank you.
Okay, so it's just, it's the groups that we're looking to send it to for feedback?
I would be open to whatever makes sense. If we want to identify some specific groups that we'd like to get feedback from. Uh, if we want to send it out to all of our stakeholders, because again, we are suggesting um some, some fundamental changes to our opening exercises. Um, you know, maybe it makes sense to go out for consultation to all, just a thought.
Okay, um. Sorry, so um are we in consensus to do that, to send it out?
No, I have a point of clarification, madam chair, and I'll get to it when you determine that, but I need to clarify something.
Okay, is it in regards to what trustee Agnew has just suggested?
It's in regards to the topic that we're discussing right now.
Okay, no, I understand, but trustee Agnew has now put something forward, so I'm dealing with that piece right now, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
So she suggested that it go out to the groups, uh CAC and CPIC and possibly parent.
It is, it is.
And the indigenous count, uh committee as well.
Indigenous committee as well, yeah, absolutely, okay. Um.
It is, madam chair.
Okay, trustee DeRosa?
Okay, so I believe that we have a motion or suggestion for changes to the existing policy that we have in the front, in the front of us. And I think that has to be resolved. We have to vote on the changes. And then uh, we can have a consensus to send it out to the various groups that uh trustee Agnew uh is suggesting. So it's just a matter of process and procedure. There's a, there is a motion from trustee Carabella on the table. I think we should deal with that. Uh, agree to make the changes or not make the changes, and then send out the policy for consultation, not before.
So trustee DeRosa, um, for, it's, it's actually trustee O'Brien's amendment that we have on the table right now. So we're dealing with that. To refer, a motion to refer to a standing committee shall take precedence over a motion to refer to a special committee or to administration. So it can actually, trustee Agnew's motion is in line procedurally, so.
But we haven't, uh, we haven't finished dealing with the motion.
I understand, I understand that trustee DeRosa.
Uh, madam chair.
I understand trustee DeRosa, but it would be, trustee DeRosa, can I finish saying what I need to say? So what would go out would be this motion.
Well, I'm suggesting.
Which is what trustee O'Brien's amendment to trustee Carabella, so it is the combination which is what is in the chat. Which is, formal prayer shall form part of every opening or closing exercise and shall include the Our Father recited in an indigenous language. That is what has been suggested. So we can't vote on it if we're asking for stakeholder feedback. Okay? I'm gonna move on to trustee.
Madam chair, just to, again, it's a, it's a matter of uh perspective. I think we, we both want to end up in the same place. I'm just saying that if we send it over for uh stakeholder feedback, they have to be, the policy has to be sent out with the suggested changes.
Yes, and I'm agreeing with you trustee DeRosa, but you don't vote on the suggested changes because we can't approve the suggested changes unless we know that that's what the stakeholders want. That's the suggestion. So what's gonna go out?
I think I'm gonna, in a chicken and egg situation, I'll let it be. Thank you.
Trustee DeRosa. Uh, trustee Murphy?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um. I lost a little bit there. Um, yeah, I, I, I think, uh, my only question was, which has been, been brought up, and I think we're, we're going down that path. It's just to make sure that it's, we have an understanding that it's culturally appropriate for us to be saying the Our Father in an, in an indigenous language. So that's, that's important for me that we get clarification from uh, from Sherry Savel or, or an indigenous advisor or an indigenous advisory committee.
Thank you trustee Murphy. Um, so, so trustee Agnew, do we want to start with um the committees, the indigenous? And uh, is that, eh, eh, cause you, you said you, you had it open, so are we gonna do stakeholder feedback from CAC, CPIC, and our indigenous um, our indigenous representatives?
Um.
I think it needs to start there first. I think it needs to go to Sherry first.
For sure. I think it definitely has to go to the indigenous committee. I mean, we're assuming a lot of things and given the climate right now. I just want to make sure that we are, um, you know, I, I know that trustee O'Brien's intention is pure. I just think we want to be very sure that we're not offending anybody. Um. So I, I think it's really im- important that we um, that we make sure that that is in line. So for sure, the indigenous committee, I feel very strongly about this going to CAC. Um, some people may, you know, think that that's not important, but it certainly is anytime that we are implementing something like this. Um, how are, are our students going to be supported when there is an additional expectation for uh reciting um some items in opening prayer, especially if they're in a different language? Um, and then I think CPIC because, you know, they are our representatives at the school level. So for sure, those three committees, I would suggest.
Okay, so um, so then I'll put it that first it, it be run by our indigenous uh representative?
Point of clarification, madam chair.
I also have a point of.
Trustee O'Brien, let's start one at a time, trustee O'Brien.
I just wanted, I thought we were going around with consensus about trustee Agnew's suggestion.
Yes, that is, that is. She was clar, we were clarifying if it was just to the committees or if it was for everybody, but we've decided that first and foremost, that it makes the most sense to have Sherry Savel actually look at it, because if it's not something that falls in line, then what are we getting feedback on?
Good. I'll wait my turn for the consensus.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we'll send it out to feedback first to um our indigenous representative and then to CPIC and CAC, correct? Um, trustee Agnew for feedback so that I can get a consensus?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I'll just go around the table. Just let me know if you agree or disagree. Um, trustee Agnew?
I'm in favor of that, madam chair.
Okay, trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor.
Uh trustee Duarte?
Uh, agree.
Trustee and Tomasi?
I can turn him out, madam chair.
Um, trustee Carabella?
Yep, in favor.
Uh trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
I agree, I just commit the comment that we did translate some of the O'Canada into indigenous language already. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Hearn-Sernota?
In favor.
Okay, uh trustee Kelly?
In favor.
I am also in favor. So um, we'll send this off for further feedback. Thank you trustees. It is ten o'clock.
I have a point of clarification on that trustee Guzzo just before. So is it, is it just to, to are the amendments going to be separated, like for a, a, a comment on amendment one and amendment two? Or is it just gonna be shown as, as one?
It's just the, it's just, we're getting the feedback just on the amendment that's put in, because we all agreed on the land acknowledgement shall form part. So that's not a question. The question is the, the um, your motion with uh trustee O'Brien's uh amendment. So that's what we're going to ask about.
So that you're asking about trustee O'Brien's amendment to the Our Father?
We're asking about that motion, yes.
That whole motion, thank you.
Okay. Um, and trustees, it's ten oh four. We need a motion to extend. Can I have a motion to extend?
Murphy will move it.
Seconded O'Brien.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. Is anybody opposed? Okay.
I am, madam chair.
Anybody else? Trustee and Tomasi is opposed. Okay, we can carry on as we are, we require two thirds and we have it. Thank you trustees for see where we are next on our agenda here. We're on, moving on to item, I think it's four point six.
Uh, excuse me, madam chair. I'd like to uh move a motion to reconsider.
Yes, sorry trustee Murphy, I uh, I wasn't ignoring you. I pulled you. I just got lost. I got lost, I got lost in the chat box.
Blame the old guy.
I am, I am. So you wanted to motion reconsider?
Yes, I'd like a motion to reconsider uh item four point four. Um, I, I think uh we missed an opportunity here to come up with some alternate solution. So the, you know, the binary yes or no, I think is problematic. What we heard from uh some of our students was that they feel there is a lacking of opportunity. So what I would like is um for our staff to come back with a report that offers some options which would provide equal opportunity leaderships for non-Catholic members on our student senate.
I'll second that.
Good, good.
This is like a separate motion though. This is uh not to reconsider, not point of order.
So trustee Carabella, give me a second to, to hear and write down what trustee Murphy has said, and then I haven't opened it up for a first or a second yet. So we first have to deal with the, the uh motion to reconsider. Peace trustee Murphy, and as you were on the prevailing side, you have the right to ask for reconsideration. So the board, so under bylaws ten point two zero, the board may set aside a vote taken on a motion in order to reexamine its action if a motion to reconsider is made at the same meeting, which it has. A trustee who voted with the prevailing side must prevent the motion to reconsider, which you did. Uh, the motion to reconsider will require an affirmative vote of the majority of the members present and eligible to vote. So we'll take a vote on trustee Murphy's uh request to reconsider item four point four. Starting with trustee Agnew.
Point of order.
Madam chair, there's a point of order here that uh trustee uh Carabella tried to raise.
And I just dealt with it trustee DeRosa, if you were listening. So she raised and said, don't we have to deal with the, the um, the reconsideration? That's what's on the table. That's what I'm dealing with.
This is not.
That's what I'm dealing, it's not debatable trustee DeRosa, okay?
Madam chair?
Would you allow me? No, madam chair.
I don't know who has a point of.
We're there to balance debate. You are not there to take sides, so I would.
Point of order! That's out of line.
Respect.
Trustee DeRosa.
Respect.
Trustee DeRosa, no, I'm not gonna let you finish your thought. Your comment was offside, and quite frankly, I am getting a little disheartened by the comments that seem to come from some of our male trustees at this table. Okay, that was not one-sided. I have to deal with the item to reconsider.
I'm not, I'm not.
Which is procedurally correct, stop trustee DeRosa. Trustee DeRosa, I'm not doing this with you, okay? The fact is, is it's a motion to reconsider, and under our bylaws, under ten point two, I am dealing with that, and I have.
It deals with the senate, it doesn't deal with the board.
You wanna appeal something, stop talking over trustee DeRosa. If you have a point of order, be specific to what bylaw has been violated.
I am being specific.
What bylaw has been violated? What number?
Madam chair, this deals with the senate. It does not deal with the motion that was passed.
So, hold on a second. You're incorrect trustee DeRosa. Trustee Murphy has asked for item four point four to be reconsidered. I am now calling a vote. Under ten point two zero, it is procedurally correct. So I am now going, calling a vote on whether or not we will allow the motion to be reconsidered.
Madam chair, point of order. What are we reconsidering? A reconsideration motion has to be specific and germane. What are we reconsidering?
We're reconsidering.
And point two, ten point two does not speak to, are you talking about ten point twenty?
Ten point twenty.
Okay, well then say that.
I did, I said.
Reconsider.
Point of order trustee.
Ian Tomasi.
Trustee Guzzo, point of order.
Sorry, just let me finish with trustee and Tomasi. Trustee and Tomasi, there is no point of order. And I did say, I did say ten point two.
Is being reconsidered. What is it specifically that we're reconsidering? You can't consider the whole motion.
Trustee Ian Tomasi, enough. Trustee Agnew, what is your point of order?
Thank you trustee Guzzo. I'm just becoming increasingly more and more upset at how many interruptions are happening. We need you to, I can't understand what's going on. You're constantly being interrupted. It's hard to follow the conversation, and I would respectfully ask that my trustees stop doing that and allow us to have a completed conversation so we can get through the business of the table.
So, thank you trustee um, trustee Agnew. Um, it, it, it is, people need to be recognized before they can speak um, when they raise a point. Um, and just to go back. Trustee Murphy has raised um, a motion to reconsider, four point four, and has asked that, that staff come back with a report which allows an equal opportunity for our non-Catholic students to have a leadership role. Did I, did I capture that correctly trustee Murphy?
Uh, yes, you did, madam chair. Madam chair.
But madam chair. I, I agree that you can have a reconsider, but then he has, then we reconsider the vote on the, the actual policy, not include a new motion at the same time. We're just voting to reconsider our vote on the policy. So we do the vote for reconsider. If it's passes, then we go back to the policy. And we look at the policy, and from there, he can say, I'd like to move to send it as a report.
Right, right. So once we go back to the policy, then I will move to refer the policy to staff with, to come back with recommendations.
And I'm pretty sure that's what I stated originally. Trustee and Tomasi, I'm not.
I believe so.
I have a point of order, madam chair.
State your point of order, and I, and limit it, no commentary, no derogatory comments. State simply what your point of order is.
Um, ten point two zero, madam chair, speaks to reconsidering the original vote. Trustee Murphy has asked to put a motion to change the original vote. The two are not congruent. You can't.
Overruled, overruled. We're moving forward with the vote to reconsider. So that being said, I'm calling a vote. Trustee Agnew?
I'm in favor of reconsideration. Thank you. Trustee Duarte?
Uh, opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed to reconsideration.
Trustee and Tomasi?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn-Sernota?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
I am also in favor. Unfortunately trustee Murphy, the motion fails. We have to move on to item. I've lost track where we are here. Uh, four point six. Which is um, policy V dash zero eight, school anniversary celebrations. Can I have somebody please move? Which is um policy V dash zero eight, school anniversary celebrations. Can I have somebody please move? That's trustee Carabella.
I like celebrations. I'll second it.
Thanks trustee O'Hern Chernotta. Um and this is, who are we here with this one? Do we have superintendent Nar with us?
Yes, good evening.
Hi superintendent Nar.
Thank you. It's nice to be back, virtually of course. So through you, madam Chair, this policy is up for um uh review in the regular review cycle. And uh the only changes made to it were to add in the associated procedure and as well, um I think there was some typos under the purpose. Um so it's there for your consideration and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you superintendent Nar. Um I'll open it up. Do we have um do we have uh any questions? It doesn't look like we do. Look at that. So we will uh we'll take it to a recorded vote. Uh trustee DeRosa.
I'm in favor, madam Chair.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Uh trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Uh trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
I am also in favor. Um the policy will be brought to the next board meeting. Thank you superintendent Nar. Uh policy VI dash one two. Um blessing and official opening of a new school. Can I have somebody move that the policy committee recommends that policy B dash one two blessing and official opening of a new school be forwarded along with amendments to the June fifteenth, twenty twenty one, regular board meeting for approval. Trustee O'Brien, seconded by trustee O'Hern Chernotta. Superintendent Nar, I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you and through you, madam Chair. Again, uh this policy is part of the regular review cycle and uh the only changes made were uh putting in the associated procedures and as well a tweaking of the language under uh principles that just I think is a a better wording to reflect the homeschool parish partnership uh involved when we are celebrating um the opening of of new schools. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you uh superintendent Nar. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a recorded vote. Uh trustee
Have my hand up. I have a question.
Your hand just came up in the chat. Trustee Ian Tomasi, you have the floor.
Uh there's a delay as I stated a lot of times here. Um so my question through you, madam Chair to superintendent Nar. I see on page twenty eight requirements groundbreaking ceremony. I don't see how groundbreaking ceremony uh plays into the blessing and the official opening of a new school. Is that just a misprint or how does that come into play? Because we're not breaking ground when we're opening new schools.
I can try and answer that. It's been in the policy for a number of years and I think it just reflects that um we have a groundbreaking ceremony prior to uh opening the school. So um it may not happen at the same time that we have the blessing, but it does take place um prior to the opening of the school.
Um supplementary, so if we have, then we would need to change the name of the policy to include ground um uh well, groundbreaking ceremony. That should be incorporated in there. So I'm suggesting while once it's seconded, um to remove uh groundbreaking and or to make it part of the policy V twelve, because the two are not congruent with one another.
I I'm sorry trustee Ian Tomasi, you're asking for us to add the in the title that it be groundbreaking as well?
Um that should be added. I mean, if you're going through the requirements and you're speaking of groundbreaking and then the title of your policy is blessing an official opening of a new school, that would suggest to me and to most people that we're actually doing the opening ceremonies at a school, which would be the cutting of the ribbon as opposed to groundbreaking.
Um so i- it's it, if you read through it, it says a groundbreaking ceremony may be organized at the new school site, but really specifically where it goes into the blessing and official opening, that's where it's more detailed and it speaks to um appendix A, the list of guests, the dignitaries. So um
Chair, I'm speaking to the official name of the
I understood trustee trustee Ian Tomasi, like I apologize, but you know, the condescension in your voice needs to stop. I understood what you said. I was simply clarifying something, but if you'd like to make that motion to make the change, by all means, go ahead and we'll ask for a second.
I already have made the the notice of motion to either include groundbreaking ceremony as part of the name of the policy and or remove it. That is my motion, ma- madam Chair.
Which is it, trustee Ian Tomasi? It's one, it's gotta be one.
Remove groundbreaking ceremony. That should be a separate policy nonetheless.
Do we have a second here?
Madam Chair, it's worth the discussion. I'll second.
Seconded by trustee DeRosa. Any questions?
I'll put my hand in the um chat bar, but I could start.
Go ahead trustee Carabella.
Thank you, madam Chair. Um so ignore my hand up. I just put it in. So I I think I, can we scroll down to the title again? Because I'm I'm only stuck on the one page blessing and officially opening. Yeah, so actually I I was hoping as trustee Ian Tomasi was deciding what to say, I would say include it because it could be groundbreaking comma blessing and official opening of a new school. I think that really reflects the whole policy. But I guess that's not what we're debating right now. But so I don't know if he can switch that or what we can do, but let's see what happens.
Okay, uh do we have any other comments? Trustee O'Hern Chernotta.
Hi, madam Chair. Yes, I was gonna agree with trustee Carabella. When trustee Tomasi was making his choice, I was thinking, put it in the name, put it in the name. I'd rather change the name than remove it.
Madam Chair, can I make a clarification?
Uh what's your clarification? Your motion has been seconded on the floor, so.
And that, but the reason I would want them removed is because generally speaking at groundbreaking, it's organized by the Minister of Education. They send a memo to the board whereby the board reacts and it's set up. It doesn't follow this particular policy. It's done by the ministry.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll take a vote on uh the recommendation uh what trustee uh trustee Ian Tomasi has put in.
I'll point a clarification, madam Chair. Can you just please tell me exactly again what we're voting on?
Yes, we are voting on removing the whole section that says requirements groundbreaking ceremony. So that whole section that says groundbreaking ceremony, there's uh the black bullet and then there's the open circle bullet underneath it. So that's what trustee Ian Tomasi has proposed that we remove completely. Um and uh so that's what we're voting on right now. Um so I'll start with uh trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien.
Can you come back to me, please?
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta.
I'm opposed.
Trustee Kelly.
Oppose.
Trustee Agnew.
Oppose.
Trustee Duarte.
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa.
Come back to me, uh madam Chair, please.
Uh trustee Ian Tomasi.
Favor.
Trustee Carabella.
Opposed.
Uh trustee O'Brien.
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa.
I'm opposed, madam Chair.
I am also opposed. So the recommended change uh fails. So moving back to the original motion. Is there any further questions? Okay, so I'll call a vote on recommending this motion with the change or this policy with the changes um to the next board meeting. Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew. Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi.
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
I am also in favor. Uh thank you superintendent Nar. Moving on to the next question, or I mean the next item, item four point eight, policy VI, V dash thirteen. Can I have somebody please move that the policy committee recommends that policy V dash thirteen blessing and rededication of a major addition to a school be forwarded along with amendments to the June fifteenth, twenty twenty one, regular board meeting for approval. Trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Duarte. Superintendent Nar. You have the floor.
Madam Chair and through you. Um again, this is part of the regular review cycle and uh some minor housekeeping changes have been made, including revising the list of the associated policies and procedures and as well um tweaking the language in under the principles section, which is consistent with the previous policy. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh trustee Ian Tomasi, you have your hand up?
I do, madam Chair. Through you to superintendent Nar. Uh the policy states um blessing and rededication of a major addition. Do we have a definition of what major consists of? Does it, because it says here thirty percent of a school. It increasing the size. So can you speak to that, please?
Sure. So I think it's on all under application and scope. So if the school size has been increased by that thirty percent or if there has been some major program facility improvement, uh which they list under there as a gym, library, resource center, kindergarten rooms, a whole wing of a school. So um uh I think that's captured under application and scope.
All right, thank you. So I I would like to put forward a motion that increase the school size by at least thirty percent be removed. And I think that it should just read any major improvement. It could be a field. It could be, you know, a rededication of a park area or whatever. So that would be my change. Remove bullet point number one.
Uh trustee Ian Tomasi, so bullet point number one in its entirety?
That is correct.
Okay, do we have a second here?
I'll second, madam Chair.
Trustee DeRosa. Any conversation? Trustee O'Brien.
Uh thank you through madam Chair. I, with all due respect to trustee Intimacy's suggestion, I I see that as really opening a can of worms. I mean, um what happens if you just change the the soccer post, um I I think there's gotta be a limit to this and I think that thirty percent seems like a a pretty reasonable number. So I cannot support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you trustee O'Brien. Uh trustee Duarte.
Actually, madam Chair, just a question. I'm wondering why we had put thirty percent in. Maybe staff can answer that. Why we chose thirty percent, why not twenty five percent?
Um I'm not sure who can answer that. Maybe superintendent Nar, do you know the history behind why thirty percent was chosen? Because I'm assuming it's been there for a while.
Yeah, and and it has been and I do not know the history on it. Um I think it's just trying to avoid uh really tiny minor things uh that have been changed. Um but uh sorry, I don't have any more information.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Uh madam Chair.
Uh thank you. Yes, trustee Ian Tomasi.
So so again, I'm just trying to make the 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 policy title congruent with the with the body. If we're talking about major, that would suggest over fifty percent. Yet in bullet point number one, we're saying thirty percent. That to me is contradictory. That's what I'm addressing.
Okay, thank you for your input, Ian Tomasi, uh trustee Ian Tomasi. So we'll take it to a vote. Oh, trustee DeRosa, you have your hand up?
Thank you, madam Chair. I just um just wanna pass a comment uh in response to uh trustee O'Brien's um concerns. I share those concerns, but uh I balanced out with the idea that if this is a local improvement that is important to the to the front lines. Um and important enough for them to want to recognize it, to rededicate it or whatever. I think the limitation of thirty percent is actually um limiting. So that's why I would actually support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you trustee DeRosa. Uh so we'll take this to a recorded vote. Um trustee O'Hern Chernotta.
So we're voting on the amendment?
Yes, on on trustee Ian Tomasi's uh amendment to remove the uh the bullet, increase the school size.
Thank you, madam Chair. I'm opposed to that amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh trustee Kelly.
Oppose.
Trustee Agnew.
Oppose.
Trustee DeRosa.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Duarte.
Opposed.
Trustee Ian Tomasi.
Favor, ma'am.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien.
Opposed.
I am also opposed. Um so the amended change does not pass. Um do we have any other questions in regards to this policy? Director Daley, do you have a comment?
Uh I do. I I don't think in the past we've actually I I don't think the thirty percent has been, it must be thirty percent. Like I don't think think all of those requirements have to be met. I think it's if we increase by thirty percent or there's some major program enhancement to it. So I I don't think in the past, we've actually said all of those things have to take place in order for a blessing to happen. I think that's been the practice in the past.
Thank you, Director Daley. I I think it would make sense to know that I'm sure that if there was any type of renovation, if a if a principal or the SO or yourself had requested a blessing, that it could happen regardless of it being thirty percent or uh or not. So I thank you for that. Um so that being said, we'll vote on the um the policy being brought to the board meeting. Um trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa. Trustee DeRosa.
I'm opposed because this is limiting and especially what the director daily just said.
Trustee Duarte.
Thank you.
In favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi.
In favor.
Trustee
No, correction, I'm opposed.
Okay. Trustee Carabella.
Uh I'm in favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Uh trustee O'Hern Chernotta.
In favor.
I am also in favor. So the policy will be brought to the next board meeting. Uh, it is ten thirty-four. So we need to have a motion to extend.
Do what?
Trustee Duert, thank you, seconded by
O'Brien.
Trustee O'Brien. We're almost done this agenda. If we could get through, it would be fantastic, but no pressure. I'll take a recorded vote. Uh, trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Duert?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Against madam Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
I am also in favor. However, um, we need unanimous consent. So the motion fails. The meeting will adjourn and on closing prayer, um, trustee O'Brien, would you lead us in our closing prayer?
Thank you, madam Chair. If we all make the sign of our faith in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, as we come to the end of our time together, we thank you for what has been accomplished here this evening. May the matters discussed serve as a catalyst to move us forward and cause us to advance and see growth in all areas of our lives. May we leave here recognizing you are the God of all wisdom and you are willing to lead us forward. This we pray in the name of our Lord Jesus and in the name of the our Father, our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. It is not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you trustee O'Brien. This concludes our policy meeting. Have a great week everyone and, uh, our next policy meeting is in September.
Thanks everyone.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.